Morning everyone and welcome to the Bradenton City Council meeting Wednesday, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, eight thirty a.m. At this time, we will ask our invocation by Executive Pastor Rick Starrett with Trinity United Methodist Church. Good morning. Please stand.
Let us pray. Gracious and loving God, today I want to thank you for every single person who's here, for each mind and heart that fills this room. God, you know what they're setting out to accomplish this morning, so I'm praying that you will give them wisdom as they discuss the many important issues that lie before them. Please provide them with the spirit of service, remind them that the citizens of Bradenton have not just appointed them, but you have selected them. And I pray that you would empower all who participate in this meeting today to act with character and conviction, help them to listen with understanding and grace, and help them speak with kindness and restraint. May they see the humanity and the dignity of those who might disagree, and may they treat all persons, no matter how weak or poor, with the reverence your creation deserves. Loving God, renew them with the strength of your presence and the joy of helping to build a community that cares about people. Strengthen them today as they make the tough decisions. Guide them so that this meeting can be productive. Let them be effective and decisive and make decisions based upon your wisdom. Again, please direct them, Lord, as we place this meeting in your hands and we ask this in the name of your son, Jesus Christ. And everyone said?
Amen.
Amen.
Please join us in the pledge. Pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. All right, we'll call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
This morning, we have a proclamation that I'll read on behalf of the mayor. Cybersecurity Awareness Month, October, two thousand and twenty-two. Whereas the city of Bradenton recognizes the vital role technology has in our daily lives and that many critical infrastructure sectors are increasingly reliant upon information systems to support financial services, energy, telecommunications, transportation, utilities, healthcare, and emergency response systems. And whereas, people and our infrastructure face increasing threats of cyber attacks. Whereas, since its inception in two thousand and four, Cybersecurity Awareness Month has elevated the central role that cybersecurity plays in our economy and in the lives of our citizens. And whereas, the security of critical infrastructure depends on federal, state, local, tribal, and territorial coordination with the infrastructure owners and operators to achieve greater strength and security. And whereas, the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency works with partners to defend against threats and collaborate with industry to build more secure and resilient infrastructure for the future. And whereas, everyone can help increase awareness on cybersecurity best practices to reduce cyber risks. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Jean Brown, as mayor of the city of Bradenton, Florida, do hereby proclaim October, two thousand and twenty-two as Cybersecurity Awareness Month in Bradenton, and encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of cybersecurity and to observe this month through events, training, and education related to cybersecurity. Signed, Jean Brown, Mayor.
Thank you. Do we have anybody to accept that? Mr. Perry?
Mayor, if I could just acknowledge our IT staff that's put, Mike, if you could stand up with your folks, and we have the IT staff here that deal with cybersecurity. We've put a great emphasis into cybersecurity. We've seen some of our neighbors have breaches and other types of cybersecurity issues. It's proliferating in the country, in the area, and we are ever vigilant. We appreciate the city council's investment financially into approving some of the systems we have. And Mike, if you want to add anything to that, appreciate the job that you and your folks do. It's behind the wall. Most people don't see it, but it's really important. And Dr. St. Lucie, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I just, we appreciate everyone's vigilance, continued vigilance as we kind of see through cybersecurity. It's day in and day out, ever changing, and our staff that works behind the scenes here is excellent, so just thank you for that.
And we appreciate you guys and all the staff in there that does everything to keep us kind of on task at times because some of the things that we get, you know, and somebody gets something from somebody saying that, you know, "I need fifty dollars, help me quick," and don't answer, so, yeah. All right, thank you.
And I'll need you to reset my password, I forgot.
That's security, so good security.
I was going to thank them for the endless times they have to do that with me.
That's good. All right. Madam Clerk?
Next, we have a presentation from Beth Duda, Director of Sun Coast Campaign for Grade Level Reading.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity, Mayor Brown, Vice Mayor Coachman, and city council and administration. My name is Beth Duda, and I'm the director of the Sun Coast Campaign for Grade Level Reading, working with the Patterson Foundation. Thank you for this opportunity to represent the Sun Coast Campaign for Grade Level Reading and to share with you the exciting news that the Sun Coast region was recently selected as a two thousand and twenty-two All-America City Award winner. As you know, the Sun Coast Campaign for Grade Level Reading is a community-wide effort in Charlotte, De Soto, Manatee, and Sarasota Counties to help all children, especially those growing up in asset-limited households, succeed in school and in life by ensuring they read on grade level by the end of third grade. On July twenty-first, the National Civic League, along with the co-convenor, National Campaign for Grade Level Reading, presented the All-America City Award to just ten communities across our nation. Barberton, Ohio, Los Angeles, California, Louisville, Kentucky, New Haven, Connecticut, Palacios, Texas, Phoenix, Arizona, Portland, Maine, Sacramento, California, San Antonio, Texas, and the Sun Coast region of Florida. We were the only multi-city and county collaboration to receive this prestigious honor, which recognizes the Sun Coast region commitment to cross-sector collaboration, meaningful partnerships, inclusion with public housing agencies and affordable housing organizations, database solutions, and equity, including racial equity. I'm honored to be the one sharing this good news, but the honor came about because of the thousands of remarkable people on the Sun Coast region coming together to support the children and families in our cities and community. Efforts in Bradenton and Manatee County are led by United Way Sun Coast. There's strong partnership between the school system, the early learning coalition, local foundations, and nonprofits that help propel this work. Many hundreds of volunteers are involved distributing kindergarten readiness bags, volunteering to read with children in school, after school, and during the summer, holding family experiential learning events, tutoring, and helping with book accessibility. Businesses are involved. One of the standouts is the Anna Maria Oyster Bar and their award-winning Dive into Reading program. And there are more than a hundred and fifty nonprofit organizations that came together for the inaugural year of the Sun Coast Remake Learning Days, holding a hundred and fifty learning events for children and families over ten days in our region. Organizations like the Bishop Museum, our public library, and Realize Bradenton. Realize Bradenton coordinated the children's book fair and promotes literacy and boosts economic development and community pride with book projects like Old Manatee from A to Z, and Tales from the Table, Flavor, Families, and Friends, and the new family reading room in the Riverwalk East Park. Ensuring the success of our region's children is both important and challenging. The collaborative-inclusive approach our region is taking will continue to bring people together to help our children and families thrive. Thank you for this opportunity to share our collective progress this morning.
Thank you. And you obviously brought up the horns and Anna Maria Oyster Bar, and several of us in this room have helped with the reading during the summer, and it's great to see the wide variety of young children that you can help and just learn their experiences and where they're from. And again, we, especially in the city of Bradenton, having the schools that we have, Title I schools more that need that maybe a lot more than other areas. So we appreciate the Patterson Foundation, obviously, for a lot of reasons. I've been on the Boys and Girls Club Board for, I'm fifty-five, so when I was eight years old, I started there. So been involved and on the board for my whole adult life, so that's been a great organization for our whole community, and thank you for that, and especially the grade ready, reading that we have now, so thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Anybody want to? Sure.
I was going to sit this out, but my wife says my parents are.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, Mrs. Melton will move on to citizen comments.
Yes, sir.
All right, citizen comments will be accepted at this time on any non-agenda items. Comments will be accepted on the public hearings and agenda items at the appropriate time. When you come forward, you'll have three minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. First, we have Rodney Jones.
Hey, greetings. Hey, boy, to clarity, can I, this is really serious, it's about corruption, and I know you've given people other time, extended time for like glacier parks and the skate park and all that other stuff, so can I have a couple extra minutes?
Now, this is under citizen comment. You have three minutes.
I know, but you, you said you have the latitude to do so.
Mr. Jones, we have three minutes. Please start the time.
Uh, here's a smoking gun that Jean Brown didn't want you to know that they've hidden for three years. Section B of this document came from, I made an accusation that I had police harassment on my home from officers Caparaz, Johnson, and Mahoney. In the white unmarked charger, when I was president of the NAACP, I came and reported it that those officers were at my home. Here's a document from Melanie Bevin that says she did an investigation, she contacted Josh Kramer, and he said, he questioned those gentlemen whether they were at my home harassing me, and they said, no. This is a note from Doc, from Melanie Bevin, Chief Melanie Bevin, that she did an investigation. They said they were not at my home, they lied. The black community, we organized, we created something called Police Patrol, and so the neighborhood was turning in traffic stops. So one of my neighbors said, hey, Mr. Jones, it was a traffic stop around that same time that the police said they weren't at your house. And lo and behold, we, we got an email, I emailed Melanie and I requested all the stops, and here's the stop that proves that those same officers that said they were not in my neighborhood, they were in my neighborhood and they were harassing me. Somebody's lying. So, Mr. Brown, I want to know, since we've got the smoking gun proof, two different statements from your chief. One, this is from her desk to a former federal investigator, Ruth Beltran, and we'll get, and we're going to be filing this complaint with the Department of Justice, but here's one that says the guys weren't there, and here's your smoking gun from your own chief, and it's whited out, the document is doctored, it looked like she wrote over it, and it's whited out and it's doctored, so I want to know what you're going to do about it. White man, I know you ain't got your tongue tied.
That's under citizen comment. You have three minutes.
I, I want to, I want to question, what are you going to do about it? Usually when a black, usually when whites come up here, oh, you need to talk to so-and-so, oh, the director, but every time I come up here as a black man, you just sit, sit there and do so. Here, we got a huge discrepancy with your chief. One document says they were there, one document says there wasn't. And since I got arrested, Melanie has known this the whole time, held this over my head three years. She perjured herself in court, you know why? She told the same lie in court. She told, you've been presented that, there's no, this was an investigation, you know what? According to your record clerk, Bill Ackles, she said in court that she does every investigation. Bill Ackles said there is no record of this anywhere, there's no case number, there's no findings, this is the only representation. My friend Alphazo Houston met with Brian Thiers, Brian Thiers is well aware of this, he was a witness to it. Josh Kramer said the guys lied because they were afraid they were going to get in trouble in front of Captain Thiers and a witness, so I just want to know what you're going to do about it.
We're under citizen comment. You have three minutes, and then we'll go through the whole citizen comment, and then comments will be made, but if you'd like to talk with the police department at that time?
Nah, I, no, I don't, you're the supervisor of the police department, I need to talk to you.
Thank you. Next on the list is David Levin.
Mayor can counsel talk?
Not till the end of all comments, that's our policy, because that's in our policy. David Levin, you have three.
It's never been in our policy in the past.
You have three minutes, not since this is, not since I've been mayor. David Levin?
You're right, not since you've been mayor.
We're following our, please, we're following our policy. Mr. Levin, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Oh, use my time if you'll answer, Mr. Jones.
You have three minutes to speak on yourself.
David Levin, one zero five, Twenty-Second Street West. I'm here today to talk about or to respond to the pedestrian safety, or how Bradenton's on a list of really dangerous cities for pedestrians. And, you know, I run the streets every day, so I, I see it, you know, up and down Manatee Avenue, you can see where people passed away because there's memorials there. And then you can see the long stretches where there's no crosswalks, and then every day you can see people just jetting across the street, it's not safe. And there's the kids too, near St. Stevens, you know, they do it, like, run a quarter mile up the road and run, I don't know where they're going, but they're doing it. And I almost hit one too yesterday, so, you know, they were like, kind of like jumping, not sure when they wanted to make the jump across the street, and it's just, it's dangerous. So that's, you know, I wanted to, I, I hope that maybe other council members saw the same report and that there's some ideas on how we can tackle that. There's a lot of different ways to tackle it too. You can't, you don't have to just put a crosswalk, you don't have to make an intersection necessarily, doesn't need to be a red light, it could be like a yield light, or, you know, I hate the way that St. Petersburg does the crossovers, those are really ugly, right? But maybe there's a way to do it that's not ugly. Maybe we can do it underground. I love the idea of tunnels, but I know, you know, we're at water level and it's not necessarily always practical. Some people like engineering challenges. So that's what I wanted to talk to you about today because it's something that's totally avoidable, someone's probably going to get hit by a car in the next few days, weeks, or months, so, you know, let's put our heads together on this one. Thanks.
Thank you.
It's called Destination Zero.
All right, next on the list, we have Tawana Johnson, and please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes. Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Tawana Johnson, I'm coming as a concerned citizen on behalf of the police corruption in our community, and it is very disturbing when you see it on the news, and these people aren't even put on suspension, so it gives me a fear and a concern for our young black men and our ethical people who are being harassed by police. If we have police officers in fear to come to work, what does that do for our community? It was sad to see on the news that no one thought that we should be protected. You giving the legal right of someone who's holding a gun to come in, I guess, get rid of whoever may be concerned about what's going on in the community, to silence them, and I don't, I really don't think that the, that we as colored people or people who are in a disadvantage is being treated fairly. Once corruption is reported, no one has the concern to at least put those people on administrative leave. You could pay them if you want to, but they shouldn't be allowed to continue to work. We got a police force that's afraid to even come to work, so me as a citizen, how should I feel? I should be in great fear of my life and be at, and be concerned about my son, my daughter, if they get stopped, what could possibly happen to them? And there's no concern by the board to even do anything about all of the corruption when seventy percent of the, of blacks in this city alone has been killed by police officers.
Thank you. Moving forward, we have Linda Sebold. Please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Linda Sebold, three fifteen Crescent Court East, Bradenton, Florida. Okay, I have several issues, and I'm going to speak fast here. Recently, you guys had discussed how to get more input from the public. I think if we start doing this in real time, recording the meetings and the workshops, that's a great start, and also you need to make sure that the public can have real-time comments. You would have a lot more.
Absolutely.
Recycling, I know, we changed that, and I'm bringing that up, and I know you guys are relooking at it, but it is something that we have changed. We should have just waited for the recycling to correct itself, and I think it would have, and I'm not picking on anyone. But now what we've done is we've taken those recycling containers and we've repurposed them, we've bought new equipment, and I'm afraid as a taxpayer, we're going to have more of a burden on the taxpayers. Okay, affordable housing, with that, why can't, why do we give so much money back to developers? Why don't we just put that in an account and provide down payment assistance to our citizens? And then you can get your money back through tax assessments or when the house is sold. That would be one approach.
Working on it.
The bridges, that is another item for me. I was in attendance at the meeting in the nineteen, early nineteen nineties, and no one wanted the city not to keep working on that. Y'all guys just wouldn't listen to what the pupils were saying. Mr. Sanders, you have me blocked on Facebook, and you're talking behind my back with my name. You should know firsthand about slander. You should have learned your lesson, and apparently you have not.
Thank you.
Don't use slander for me, because I will get you. Y'all guys have a good day.
Thank you. All right, Betty Rhodes. Please state your name and address for the record, not that I haven't known you forever.
Okay, Betty Rhodes, Manatee County. Okay, I'm here for everyone up here. I don't underestimate me, I know more than I say, think more than I speak, and notice more than you all think I notice. Okay, the reason why I'm here is because as being in the community and I got time to do what I'm doing now, people are always going to come to me, we're going to sit down and talk. Now, a lot of people is upset because of the investigation you all had with Chief Belvin, how it was done. Now, I was going to sign a complaint on the police department, but when I noticed who was over in Internal Affairs, why should I do it? It's against him, and you think he gonna make himself look bad before you all? And I think the only thing, like I told them, they say that Judge Holden went about what the Internal Affairs say, and that Internal Affairs is the guy who worked here. So only thing I'm saying to my friend, I believe that if it was done with an outside vendor, then more would have been happened, because you don't know, because I know about the Fourth Amendment. We are protected by cease and unlawful entry of the house unless you have a warrant. If you do not have a warrant, you can't search nobody in the house. And Judge Holden saying that no law was broken, but see, back in the days, I was very good in history, and I read up on a case about a spokesman named Charles Kraft. I know some of you all in here know about that guy back in nineteen sixty-five. They planted something at a telephone against him. It was unlawful, he went through the appeal court. So what this guy did, it took him two years, but they had to vacate that charge against him because it was unlawful, the Supreme Court said. So what you all should have did is got an outside vendor to do this investigation. You can't have nobody in your apartment doing nothing. They go out and see. And another thing too, Mayor Brown, I did meet with the captain, and I was told I shouldn't have met with them by itself another detective, because I thought it was going to be me and him, but it ain't making a difference, because you know me, I'm gonna get my point across. But I hope by the devil, nobody was in there investigating that conversation, because they're going to be in trouble. They really are, and I never did get the findings back from Chief Belvin on the thing where I bent came before you all, but something was saying that when they sit shift this off, Piper knew that wasn't no alphanemy in L. White, it came back, it wasn't. So I'm gonna tell you, you got to watch your own officer here. They can plant, they can say whatever they want, but thank you.
Thank you. I have no other cards. Only thing I'd like to say is, Mrs. Sebold, if, maybe if you get with, I don't know if Mr. Jim, you want to have her talk to Brian about, I know Brian's here, maybe some of the recycling and that there is no additional cost with using those blue bins, and then also, you know, get some of the information on affordable housing, information. I don't know if Robin has anybody that can reach out to her, maybe get her number, and she could talk to some different things about that. And then, that's all I have, anything else, Mr. Sanders?
Yeah, are you going to allow Mr. Jones to have the same rights to discuss things? You just, wait a minute, you picked out one particular, you did exactly what he accused you of. He's a black man, and he wants answers, I've got some answers for him, and he's, I think he's entitled to have this in a public forum, and you picked out a white lady that happens to be my neighbor.
Mr. Sanders, not to answer that. Uh-huh. Mr. Sanders, I told you.
And I think, I think you're politicizing this.
Mr. Jones, is there not a conversation?
You're politicizing this.
No, I am not, Mr. Sanders.
You're politicizing this as the evil empire.
We're going to take a five-minute recess. We're gonna take a five-minute recess.
Closer view of what they are currently planning for that drive-through. Again, I want to emphasize that this approval does not approve the site plan. It just approves the use. But they have determined this will be the corner for the drive-through. The general design is here. You can see the double drive-through. You can see how it's set back from Fourteenth Street there. So when we consider special uses, we have a standard set of standards that we must consider. The first one deals with landscaping. I'm not going to go through all of them. All of them are in your staff report, but I'm just going to point out some of the ones that stand out in this particular instance that you need to consider. So this does call for a landscape separation strip of at least 10 feet. They are requesting a bit of a relief from this requirement. They're requesting a reduction of approximately five feet along Thirteenth Avenue West for just a small amount of space to accommodate what is needed for that double stacking lane configuration of the drive-through. That would place the stacking lane within five feet of the sidewalk for about one vehicle length. However, we've added a stipulation that we're recommending that will require a fence, wall, or bollards to provide a substantial buffer between those cars and the pedestrians there. Regarding setbacks, the T-5 zoning district actually calls for a zero-foot minimum and an eight-foot maximum front setback for a principal building on a site. However, this drive-through is setback 30 feet from the First Street property line. It does, on one hand, allow for a significant separation between the building and the traffic that speeds along First Street West. But there's also an existing utility easement that impedes the applicant from meeting the smaller setback that's typically required in T-5. And then finally, regarding screening, walls, fences, the applicant does intend to preserve existing street trees where possible. The drive-through is located along a busy thoroughfare, so it appears there's not a need to protect from the noise and view of the use. But along First Street, that is. But as mentioned, there will be additional screening along Thirteenth Avenue. So these are all of the standards that we look at to consider approval or denial of a special use application. So to run through these, regarding ingress and egress, the applicant has proposed two access points so far, one along Thirteenth Avenue West and one onto First Street. First Street will, of course, need approval by FDOT before moving forward. Regarding off-street parking and loading areas and the potential for negative externalities, the parking areas are generally located internally to the site. They will be screened by a street screen, and there's limited parking that's located adjacent to Thirteenth Avenue West at this time. I do want to point out that, again, that 15-foot water, or there is a 15-foot water easement that's located interior to the site that limits their parking orientation a bit. But there are 27 spaces that are proposed adjacent or very near to that restaurant, the drive-through, that's proposed, which exceeds the nine spaces that would be required by Form-based code at one space per 500 square feet of the building. The site is adequate to support parking for the multiple use is proposed for future development. Here's just the site plan again, so you can see that as I go through these. Regarding design of refuse and service areas, the dumpster is shown here. It's hard to see, but it's just south of the proposed drive-through building. I do want to say that that's not a necessarily permanent spot for that dumpster. That is something that is being worked out with Public Works, and it will be finally determined with the approval of the site improvement permit. Regarding utilities, adequate utilities are available for the project. Again, the final location of the tie-ins, et cetera, will be determined with review and approval of the special use permit, or sorry, excuse me, the site improvement plan. Screening, buffering, separation of any nuisance hazards or features of the use. It does not appear that this proposed use would be a nuisance in this area. Any proposed signs and exterior lighting will be reviewed at the time of the site improvement permit. Signing signage will be reviewed separately through the permitting process and, of course, will be subject to the standards of the Form-based Code. It doesn't appear that this development will have a negative impact on the value of surrounding properties. It, again, is located on a major commercial corridor, and this use is consistent with other commercial uses nearby. The site is adequate to support the proposed use with minimal adjustments due to the location of infrastructure, as previously mentioned, and it is generally compatible with the adjacent properties and other properties in the district. It does not appear that this use is noxious and would have a significant adverse effect on the environmental quality of the district. And finally, it is consistent with the future land use classification of urban commercial corridor, which includes drive-throughs as a permitted use. Staff is recommending approval with the following stipulations. The first four aren't particularly special to this project. Those are just there to provide assurance that while this is not the final site plan that you're seeing today, the site plan will be, of course, reviewed for its compliance with our codes. Again, the access points will have to be approved by Florida Department of Transportation on First Street. Modifications during the site improvement permitting phase will, of course, reflect safe logical traffic circulation. But that fifth one, once again, is very important to this project, which is regarding making sure a substantial fence, wall, or bollards are placed to protect pedestrians along Thirteenth Avenue West. Planning Commission also recommended approval with these stipulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? All right, so at this time, do we want the applicant to come forward? Talk?
Good morning. Cherie Akers with BL Companies. I'm the planning and engineering consultant that represents the contract purchaser.
And you have been sworn. I saw you.
Yes, I have been sworn many times. I think you all are familiar with the project, and obviously Jamie's done a wonderful job of presenting, and I know we've been before you previously, back in March, when we did the land use amendment. We just want to state that we are in concurrence with all the stipulations, and we accept those into the record as part of this development, and we'll be moving forward, as she indicated, with site improvement, and we'll get into more of the details of the actual site layout and Form-based Code review. And we've been working with staff, and we'll continue to work with staff.
Thank you. Any questions?
When do you think you'll have a more viable site plan?
Well, our client is pushing us to submit as soon as possible. We're hoping by the end of the month that we will have in for site improvement plan. We're working through the stormwater right now with South Florida Water Management and getting that dialed.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Heard it to open the public hearing at this time. We'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? If come, you can speak on this? Yes, ma'am? Please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
Betty Sales Rhodes, and I go along with that project. Only one thing, we trying to figure out my niece and I back there. Okay, it's been built on where the youth center was, right? Okay, that's what we had agree on because when the grocery store couldn't get there. Okay, how is they gonna come in and out? Is this gonna be a dine-in, a sit-in too, or just a dine-out? They ride through the drive-through to get their food?
From what I understand, it'd be a full McDonald's.
Both.
Full, full, drive-in or sit-down restaurant.
What the seating capacity gonna be?
We can ask the applicant.
I don't know.
Approximately.
Like a standard McDonald's.
Yeah.
Oh, like a McDonald's. Okay, you know, I love that because after we had met about the grocery store and all that we had to go through. So, you know, we, we, I, I love that idea in that neighborhood for people who can, don't have to go wait at that and come across. But how are we gonna have, if some kids want to come across from the east side, how you gonna have that set up? See, you gotta look at both angles. If we're gonna have that traffic light up there where they can match the button, they can cross over, and plus, they getting in, you know, at 13th Avenue Youth Center, it's almost one-way in, and then you come out to go around. So how are they gonna have two entrances or what? You know, that's what, you know, the pub's gonna want to know.
Yes.
How they go in.
One on First and 13th.
Okay, that's how I gonna do. Oh, okay, but please check for the traffic, for the kids coming across the highway to come to the restaurant, okay? Thank you.
Ms. Rhodes, I have the same concern, and I'm hoping that there's some way that traffic engineering can enhance that, that walkway across that major.
Any other public comment on this restaurant? Mr. Jones?
Thank you, fine, sir. Hey, I got a question. Is that the only thing? You know why I'm asking? I live in that community. I manage Bradenton Village, so we've got over 330, we got 338 units in that area. We got 700 people on the rent roll, but we're close to 1,300 people, we estimate, with the housing issues and the rental issues. So is that the only thing that's gonna be on that property, or is there something else?
Mr. Roth is chairman of the CRA.
Yeah, there's, there's several other buildings that are going on there. I forget the current status. I know the CRA meeting later today, the applicant is gonna be addressing that.
Those meet, those buildings will be purpose for what? Because I know at one time we were talking about some affordable housing there and doing some other things and kind of a mixed-use property.
More retail and office. There's not.
Retail and office?
Yes.
And McDonald's.
Mr. Jones, this is more retail and office, maybe some medical, maybe a Walgreens, Subway, I believe, has already signed a contract, and a Family Dollar has. Because we did not want the grocery, I say we, the community, we went out to community and asked, and they said they really didn't want that grocery store now, believe that or not. But, so they directed us to, to stop looking at a grocery store. A grocery store could come in there if, if, if it was desired by this council and the public, but at this point, that's been put on hold, and so a Family Dollar, Subway, more retail, maybe a Walgreens, maybe a, a medical supply, not medical supply, but medical office, urgent care, or something like that, that fits in with the community. We didn't want any more affordable housing. We thought we had enough in that area.
Mrs. Coachman?
Yes, thank you. And there will also be an element of historic purpose in, in that area, on that. We're still working on that. We have a public arts advisory board, and we'll probably be meeting, you know, setting up meetings to meet, excuse me, setting up meetings to meet and with the community to make sure we have input, just as we did when there was the talk about the grocery store, and the majority of the community that met were kind of, they were, they had, they had come to the understanding that it would be difficult to get a grocery store there for different reasons, and that there's a local, in neighborhood grocery, like, place, Miller's. You know where Miller's is. So there was the thought to put, excuse me? There was a, we have a person, an, um, agreement and a contract with a gentleman, and so Miller's is going to be revamped to look different from it ever has, and it will provide sufficient enough fruits, vegetables, meats, and what have you, you know, like, as a neighborhood grocery store, which is what we really need.
All right, I appreciate you asking.
Mr. Jones, we, we had a public meeting at the church right across from Miller's. There was a lot of, a lot of.
Dead church?
Yeah, I don't know what the name of it is.
It's a dead church.
Dead church? Where are you talking?
It was.
Ward Temple.
Ward Temple. There was.
And there's Sunday.
Yeah, there was a lot of, a lot of people attended it, and the current developer and the guy that's purchased Miller's was there, and he basically said, "We can't have two grocery stores competing with each other." So it was aired, nobody voted on it. So what we did as a, as a CRA board, which is in the next meeting, if you want to stop by and hear, we voted to kind of table it. We didn't kill it. We voted to table it and see what happens with Miller's. Because he basically said, "If you're gonna support that, I'm not, I'm not interested, really, in opening a local market." So we agreed with him, or the community said, "All right, let's just do a Family Dollar." That's, that has, that's exactly what I look for, is public input to tell me what they want this council to do, not me tell them the other way around. So that's what the public said. Now, was there, there were multiple meetings, but we've had multiple meetings here about this, so I feel that that was the direction that the public gave us as a board.
I got you. I appreciate it. And Ms. Coachman, I appreciate you for finally doing something now, take that same interest in our face.
Mrs. Coker? Please. Mrs. Coker?
Okay, and I think what's before us now is going to make this site a lot more attractive, and so I'm, I think it's a good thing that we're not tied in completely on what else is gonna be on there. It's kind of fluid, and I think by doing this, it could make possibly what's down, down the road a little bit more attractive.
All right, is there any, let's see if there's any citizens, and we'll be able to talk. Any other comment? Any other comment? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing, and the chair will entertain a motion, and then we'll have discussion.
I have a motion to approve Resolution 2240 with the stipulations.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion by Mr. Sanders, second by Mrs. Coachman, to approve any further discussion with the stipulations?
Yes, sir.
All right, all right. Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward one.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
Carries five to zero. Thank you. Mrs. Coker? I'm, Ms. Coker. Mrs. Melton?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Resolution 2241, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Bradenton granting special use permit number SU.22.2693 to operate a light industrial facility slash lounge brewery in the T-4 General Urban Open Zoning District at 511 10th Street East, Bradenton, Florida, and 517 10th Street East, Bradenton, Florida, providing for severability and providing an effective date.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, council. This is Sakshi, the city planner, representing the planning department today for the special use request to operate a lounge or light industrial facility or a brewery in the T-4O or general urban open zoning district. The property is located at 511 and 517 10th Street East. The subject property currently supports an office building of 4,140 square feet. The applicant is proposing to convert part of the building, approximately 2,400 square feet, to operate a brewery. The existing real estate office would continue to operate in the remaining, remainder of the building and would be managed under same ownership. The subject property has its frontage along 10th Street East. City zoning along north, south, and east of this corridor is also T-4O or general urban open. It consists of mixed-use development, but primarily residential urban fabric and scattered commercial activity. Meanwhile, to the west of the corridor, we have T-5 or urban center zoning district, which consists of higher-density mixed-use buildings that accommodate retail offices, row houses, and apartments, majorly promoting more pedestrian-oriented uses. The underlying future land use along this corridor is UV or urban village to the north and east, and UCBD or urban central business district to the west, and medium-density residential to the south. The proposed use is consistent with the development pattern of this corridor and is permissible under T-4O district via special use permit. The applicant is proposing an adaptive reuse of the part of the building to operate a brewery. As you can see in the site plan, this part of the building would be operated as a brewery, and the remainder would continue to operate as real estate office. They are proposing 30 indoor seating with 52 outdoor seating. The hours of operation that the applicant is suggesting is 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Sunday to Thursday, and 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., only on Fridays and Saturdays. There would be no cooking on-site. Food would be served only via food trucks. The applicant will also apply for two COP licenses, which is only for beer and wine. They are proposing 19 parking spaces, including two ADA parking spaces. Our Form-based Code requires them to put five spaces with one ADA spaces, so they are exceeding the requirement. There was also a traffic study done for this project, and the result says that the impact of this project would be de minimis. This is the interior layout, where you can see the brewery, the cool room, the tasting room. The state's regulations, Florida Statute 562452A, requires a location for on-premises consumption of alcoholic beverages may not be located within 500 feet of the real property that comprises a public or private school. The nearest school here is Tabernacle Christian School, and it is more than 1,000 square feet, 1,000 linear feet away from the proposed project. Section 3.3.1 of the city's land use regulations dictates the general standards required for the approval of a special use. The first criteria states that all special uses shall be subject to general regulations of these land use regulations for single or development structures, lots, yards, and vehicular use areas, as well as specific dimensional regulations for lots and structures for the zoning district in which the special use is proposed. Next, a criteria states that a landscape separation strip of at least 10 feet in width shall be provided along all property lines and along all streets serving the premises except at approved access points. The applicant is requesting a relief from Section 3.3.1.2 because the existing building abuts the property line on north and on the west. Secondly, there's all existing six-feet-high fence on the east and south of the property, and there's also 15-foot alley on the north and east side of the property. Section 3.3.2 of the city's land use regulations dictates the review criteria for special users. The first criteria is the tract of land must be suitable for the type of use proposed by virtue of its location, topography, shape, and the nature of surrounding development. Next, criteria states that the access points must be located so as to best suit the use and property. Wide spacing between access points and intersecting streets should be required when feasible. Next, criteria says that all buildings shall be located at an adequate distance from property lines and streets. Setbacks in excess of those required by the specific zone may be required to lessen the effect of the use to neighboring properties. Next, a permanent screening, such as walls, fence, hedges, and other barriers, may be required to protect surrounding properties from view of the premises or noises from their use. To this staff feels that the subject property is suitable for the proposed use and meets the above general standards and review criteria, it provides adequate land area for the building and the associated improvements. The proposed building complies with the maximum permitted FAR in urban village as well. Section 3.3.2.5 states the reasons for approval and denial of a special use application. First criteria states that the adequacy of ingress and egress to property and proposed structures with particular regards to automobile and pedestrian safety and convenient traffic generation flow and control and emergency access. The proposed project is an adaptive reuse of an existing office building, which includes majorly interior renovations with minor site modifications. The site is currently accessible via one ingress-egress point, which is adequate for the proposed project. No changes are proposed to the access. Next, criteria states that the location and design of off-street, location and design of off-street parking and loading areas in regards to the item in A above, and the smoke, noise, glare, dust, vibrations, fumes, pollution, and other effects of the use on adjoining properties. The existing parking lot is adequate for the proposed use. Vehicular activity associated with the proposed use will not affect adjoining properties as far as smoke, noise, glare, dust, vibrations, fumes, or pollutions. As specified earlier, the applicant is proposing 19 parking spaces, including two ADA spaces, where our codes require just five parking spaces with one ADA space. The next criteria states the location and design of refuse and service areas in regards to availability, adequacy, and the effect upon surrounding properties. Any refuse facility, including the dumpster location, is required to comply with all city requirements and is subject to approval of Public Works through permitting. Please note, site plan is subject to minor modifications based on, in sense, the location of the dumpster might change, but it would be done according to the approval of Public Works. Next, criteria states that the utilities in regards to location, availability, adequacy, and compatibility with surrounding properties. The proposed project will utilize existing access to city's portable water and sanitary reservoir. Next, screening, buffering, or separation of any nuisance or hazardous features. The proposed use does not suggest any nuisance or hazards, and is generally compatible with surrounding uses. I do want to specify over here that this project is almost one and a half miles from the downtown area. The proposed project is also an adaptive reuse of an existing building, and the applicant is requesting relief from the required landscaping buffer because they already, the existing property, abuts the property line on north and west. There's a six-feet-high fence on the east side and south, and there's also 15-foot wide alley on north and east of the property. Next, criteria states that the proposed traffic safety and compatibility and harmony with surrounding properties. Yep. Any lighting or signage shall be in accordance with the City of Bradenton's requirements. Plan review during the building permit process will ensure compliance with the applicable codes. Next, effect upon the value of surrounding properties. The use shall not hinder the development of nearby vacant properties or adversely affect their economic value. To this staff feels that any negative economic externalities on surrounding properties are not anticipated by this project at this time. Next, criteria states that adequacy of land and/or building which are to be used. The proposed project is an adaptive reuse of existing site. The site accommodates the proposed building and related improvements while meeting city standards for site design. Next, children compatibility or appropriateness with adjacent properties and other property in the district with special consideration given to the proposed hours of operation. The proposed use will not conflict with any of the surrounding uses. As specified earlier, the hours of operation will be limited to 10:00 p.m., Sunday to Thursday, and only 11:00 p.m. on Fridays and Saturdays. Next, environmental quality of the district in which the use is proposed and the effect the special use permit might have on such quality. To this staff feels there will be no negative impacts to the existing environmental quality of the district as a result of the proposed project. Next, consistency with city's comprehensive plan. The proposed use is consistent with the site's underlying future land use of urban village, which seeks to develop with correct lifestyle and friendliness of a village and encourage a distinct sense of place with mixed uses, walkable environments, that supports and enhances a budding neighborhood users. Therefore, staff recommends approval of this special use, special use request SU.222693 with the following stipulations. First stipulation was the number, the stipulated hours. Brewery operations would be, would be allowed for 24 hours. However, lounge facilities would be limited to 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Sunday through Thursday, and 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., only on Fridays and Saturdays. Deliveries and shipping would be conducted from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Next stipulation was outdoor furniture must be secured nightly. Next, outdoor amplified music shall not exceed city's noise standards. Next, seating areas must be configured to allow ADA-compliant clear parts of travel. City's planning commission met on August 17th to hear this case, and they also recommended approval for the case with strike through of staff, strike through of stipulation one from staff-recommended approvals. Thank you.
All right, you had mentioned about how many spaces for parking, and how many seats are there, indoor and outdoor? How many was the seating?
They had 30 indoor seating and around 50 outdoor seating.
So 30 indoor and 50 outdoor, so that's 80 places for people to sit?
Yes. Let me open that side again.
19 spaces seem, is that what our?
That our code requires five seats, because.
For 80 spa, for 80 seats?
Form-based Code does not require based on seating. It says based on the square footage.
And I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
I'm okay with it. I just want to make sure that when I get the phone call, that it's full, that, you know, that's what our code is. And I knew that. I was just saying, I wanted to say it because, you know, if you get 80 people there, that's could be 45, 50 cars. I hope it's that successful.
Maybe, maybe we're thinking about foot traffic from.
Well, the scooters.
The apartments and the scooters.
Get on the scooter there and then leave.
That's a good thing. Bring a bear on the scooter.
Well, driving wouldn't be any better, so, all right.
Police department have something to say about that.
Yeah, yeah. So anybody have any questions before we go to the applicant?
I, I, was there any opposition from the public? I had received, I don't know of other council members, I had received one call from, and I'm, I'm assuming it's from the Tabernacle Christian Church, because I was told that it was near there, and they didn't want that kind of element, you know, so close, and, and you know, fortunately or unfortunately, it's 1,000 feet away, so that's within regulations.
I do want to specify that's the distance from the school, and that's what Florida State Statute requires.
Yeah, I, yeah.
We don't have any, the Florida Statute just states the difference, distance to a church. We did calculate that, and it's calculated through the pedestrian route, and they are still 400 feet from the door to door because, yeah.
And I think that some people have the mindset that a brewery is going to bring, you know, a lot of over drinking and so forth. Most of those beers are low alcohol. I don't know if they're gonna have a. I don't know if they're going to have a full bar like Motorworks does, but, and generally you don't really see that kind of overuse in these micro breweries.
They have applied for two C O B licenses, so it's just going to be beer and wine. And Motorworks has four C O B licenses, so they serve other alcohol too.
Mrs. Coker?
Yeah, well, there's also the fact that there's a couple of other, you know, restaurants and bars in that, so it's, they're going to be kind of right in that area, so just, I don't see standing in the way of this or that. It'll be a nice little entertaining district, I would think.
And I think it says it's a mile and a half from our downtown. Well, that kind of was the original downtown Manatee, so we're kind of reinventing that area, so I think it's a great thing. Mr. Sanders?
She took the words right out of my mouth. If there is two or three other bars in that area named, and we're promoting development of that area as the original Manatee, Old Bradenton area, and it fits right in with our new park, it fits right in with our trailway. I mean, it's exactly what we've been looking for, so I support that fully.
And the fever may be caught and we, as we are considering revitalizing M L K.
Yep, that was all in between, yeah.
All in between.
Right, right up the street.
All right, Mr. Roth, did you have a question?
Yeah, on that, on that note, and that's the, so I was just having this discussion with Mr. Perry earlier this morning is that, you know, as the city grows, as we develop the downtown and everything, there's only a few different directions that the retail that, that businesses can go to. The one's further east, the other one is, is, you know, M L K, but also down Ninth and Fourteenth Street, Tamiami Trail in particular, that that's, that's all that's left on our growth pattern. You know, everything to the Wears Creek is kind of a natural barrier and residential on the other side, so it's really, we're limited on where our growth is going to happen. It's going to be in that area and it's going to be to the south.
Room to grow.
All right, so at this time, we'll ask the applicant to come forward and if they have any comments before we go to public hearing? Good morning. If you please state your name and were you sworn?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Elizabeth Blandford.
Randy Blandford.
And so we've been a part of this community for over twenty years. We've raised our children here, and we already have a successful business on Annaria Island. We see this as a dream and we're excited about it. You know, I wanted to address the component about getting CD characters. We see this brewery as a family friendly place. We're going to do activities, we're going to also offer desserts, coffees. So for us, we want it to be very inclusive, and we're excited that we're at the end of the River Rock extension because we feel like it's a natural thing to build the neighborhood. And we've invested so much into this building, we feel like it's such an addition economically for the area.
Yeah, and it just, this will definitely add to the community as far as the other businesses in the area. We also see this is going to help improve property values. We could even see additional development in businesses come in with, from us doing this project. So we only see positive, positive impacts from it.
And to address parking, so right now we do have those parking spaces, but we have an agreement with our neighbor to utilize his thirty-plus parking spots. So that is the plan, we hope, you know, knock on wood, that we're very successful and that we can take over that other property.
Good. Mrs. Barnaby?
Well, I had a question and, and it may, this may not be something that you can answer, but the staff recommendations on the report had the planning commission, and the strike through of stipulation one, which are the hours. So if the planning commission struck through the stipulations, what would, what do we anticipate the hours of operation being? I'm trying to understand why the planning commission wanted to have that stipulation struck through.
Okay, so the hours of stipulation that I put in stipulation one were the, those that the applicant recommended, and the planning commission decided to strike through this one because they said that they can have, they should have hours similar to the other breweries in the city that goes beyond the hours that they are requesting. So that's why they said, let's not put this stipulation in itself and let them operate like other breweries in the city. So that's why they recommended a strike through for that.
All right. And my question to the applicants would be, it stipulates that you're going to not exceed city noise standards. If you are operating on like a Friday or Saturday night until, I'm assuming there, there are places that operate until two in the morning, what about the outdoor noise at that point?
I think for us right now, we're, we're approaching it from a, you know, more of a small, family orientated, and we really want to attract families with children. But in the event that we did grow, I know that when we were at the council meeting, they had mentioned that that area, one of the benefits was that there were, and I, we'd have to go back and look at the minutes or whatever, but they had mentioned that there really wasn't a noise restriction on that specific area because that was the, the goal for growth in that specific, because it has been a pretty pleited neighborhood. But for us right now, we're not, that is not our intent. Our intent is to just have, if we have entertainment, it's really just to be very calming. We want it to be, we want it to be the place that you go and it's dressy, it's, it's a little bit, it's, you can go in flip flops and you can also go in a dress and, and heels. So we want it to be very, you know, we're trying to have a classy, family orientated place.
So you don't anticipate having a heavy metal night or?
No.
I'm just, I'm just asking.
No, no, I would think more acoustic guitar would be more my thought process.
The vibe that you're going for.
Yeah, just a very, you know, we want, again, is we want to appeal to the families. We, we don't want to be a bar atmosphere. We want it to be very family friendly where they can play games, whether it's ping pong or, you know, just, just very, it's what we like, so that's what we're trying to create in that space.
Thank you.
I do want to add that they do fall into noise ordinance area and they will require to follow the restrictions of the noise ordinance, which is, and they do, they are not proposing any outdoor live entertainment at this point, so they will be within those limitations.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions, Mr. Sanders?
Yes, yes, thank you for finally recognizing me. I'm in support of your, your, that neighborhood needs that revitalization. And probably to answer Mrs. Barnaby's question about why did the planning board strike through it, well, the planning board chairman has a bar right around the corner from there. So that would be an enticement, but, you know, I agree with him on this one. But that was, that was, he's the chairman of, anyway. Thank you, and, you know, all I want to ask is can I have my jersey on the wall like the previous mayor did at Old Bricks? You know, I don't know what number I'd put on there, but, you know, that would be, that's my neighborhood. I can walk there, and I probably would walk there because I'd want to walk home. Either let somebody drop me off and Uber me back.
It's on my side, I mean.
It's on your side, I know, but, you know, no, 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 come on. You know, I, I get it, I get it, but thank you.
We'll allow you.
We'll allow it.
All right, no further questions, thank you. We'll go to the public hearing. This time we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Anyone wishing to speak? Hearing none will close the public hearing. All right, chair, entertain a motion.
Move to. Nope, sorry.
Appropriate, right there.
Oh.
Emotion.
Is she going to make it?
It's your ward.
It's my ward, okay. Wait, whoa, whoa, where is it? Where is it? Do I have it in front of me?
Twenty-one forty-one.
Got it.
Two forty-one.
Move to approve resolution twenty-one dash forty-one.
Twenty-two forty-one.
Twenty-two dash forty-one. Case number S U point two-two, point two-six-nine-three.
Second.
The motion to approve by Mrs. Coachman, second by Mr. Sanders.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, just so, to clarify, there were, there was a staff recommendation in terms of stipulations, and then there was the recommendation from the planning commission, so I think we need to specify in the motion whether, whether the approval will include the hour stipulation or whether that, whether that will be stricken.
Stricken by, as recommended by the planning commission.
In point of order, we, we would want to, if we accept with, accept the staff recommendation with the stipulations, that needs to be, and I'll be happy to make a friendly amendment if the maker of the motion would accept it, that it includes the staff stipulations two, three, and four.
Can, can you read those, please? The stipulations two, three, and four again? And, 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 and if, and if the applicant has any objections to those stipulations?
Stipulation two.
Shaking her head, no.
Stipulation two was outdoor furniture must be secured nightly. Third stipulation was outdoor amplified music shall not exceed city noise standards. The fourth stipulation was seating areas must be configured to allow area compliant clear paths of travel.
And applicant is, they're shaking their head, yes, so, thank you. So I just want a clarification of the stipulations and make sure that everybody understands.
So amending the motion, move to approve the resolution twenty-one dash forty-one with stipulations.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. I have my glasses on.
Two, three, and four, while striking one that was recommended by the planning commission.
And I'll second that with the friendly amendment.
It was approved, to approve that with those stipulations the way they are. All right, so hearing, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote. Ward two?
Yes.
Three?
Yeah.
Four?
Yes.
Five?
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Carries five to zero. Thank you. Congratulations. All right, Mr. Perry?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Mayor, the next matter. It's on our agenda is new business, and under new business, we have the Ironwood Water Main Replacement. I think Mr. McClellan can probably talk a little bit about what this, this involves. We have representatives from Ironwood that adhere, the, the executive director of the Master Association, their attorney, and other folks that can stand for questions regarding this initiative. Mr. McClellan?
And as Mr. McClellan comes forward, obviously, when I was the ward council person for two, there was a lot of discussion and had meetings and, with different people at that time, and then I know Ms. Barnaby's had some now with, over the questions. So as it goes forward, it's kind of a ward two thing at the beginning, but it has to be a city thing when you go through everything, so Jim will give all the explanation on it.
Good morning, Council. Jim McClellan, Director of Public Works and Utilities. The short history here is that the water system for the Ironwood community is currently a private system. It's master metered off of our water main on Cortez and serves the individual buildings within the Ironwood community. The Ironwood community maintains it and has been maintaining it. They have a service company that they, they utilize for doing that and have approached the city about the feasibility of the city taking over that system. What we told them was that before we would take it over, much like a used car, you want to check it out and make sure that it's up to standards before it is taken over, so we asked that the system be brought up to standard. To do that requires a significant capital investment, and we have had discussions with the Ironwood community about the possibility of instituting a special taxation district to fund the capital cost associated with that. But the first step in the process is to develop engineering design for the water system replacement that would be required to bring this system up to, up to speed. Initially, we hooked them up with one of our utility engineers and asked them to try to negotiate a contract with them to have them directly do the design for them. Not surprisingly, because of them being a private entity, the engineering company was a little less than zealous about entering into a direct contract with them to do it. So that came back to us as if we were to have the company design that for us with the Ironwood community doing a reimbursement for that cost associated with the engineering design. So that's kind of the, where we're at is at the point where we're trying to establish an agreement between Ironwood and the city as it relates to the reimbursement agreement associated with that design.
And how long has Ironwood Pine Brook been in existence?
I believe it was built in the early seventies.
And so this was a system that when the developer did it, it was a private system.
Correct.
And all we did, as you said, brought the water to their property line with a meter, and as the system has aged, it's becoming very difficult to maintain, and so they need help, the community needs help, but it shouldn't be on the taxpayers of the whole city. It's got to be on that community. But as we would take over a road from a developer, but it has to be up to our standards. So the whole issue is if it's up to our standards, we will take it over, then maintain it in perpetuity, but it has to be at that point first, and there's only one way to get to that is what we're talking about today.
Question?
Yes, sir.
It, that's a private property. Is that, is that property taxed in the city of Bradenton?
Yes.
Yes. So there's, there's other neighborhoods like that that want to maintain control. I mean, for example, the inlets had that problem with maintaining roadways some years ago, and the city turned it down, and lo and behold, that was the worst mistake they ever made because there's three to four hundred, half a million dollar houses in there that would be taxed now with the city. It'd be an enormous shot in the arm, and all because we didn't want to repave those streets, but we would have got it back over time. I don't know what the tax rolls, I see a representation here, they can tell us what the tax rolls are, but I agree with it, we need to have a public-private partnership with this. Well, that opened the, that's a gated community.
No.
No?
It's not a gated.
It's not, okay. So it is not, I, you know, it was restricted?
There was, the, the way it was worked was back in the day, there was a written agreement that the city would take over ownership of the roadways and those utility, the drainage and the sewer system within the roadways. And in that case, in Ironwood, the roadway right away goes from back of curb on one side of the road to back to curb on the other.
Do we have city water in there too?
Well, we provide the water through a master meter at Cortez, but the water system from that master meter as it distributes to the various buildings is a private system.
And that would include the golf course there?
Correct.
Okay. No, I think it's something we, we should consider because it's a, a, a good community, and I, I realize that it's getting, it's probably going to be pretty expensive, but...
It, it will, and part of that is, is that, you know, our engineering staff have looked at it to say, what do we think it would take?
Right.
And it's, you know, somewhere in the.
But there may have to be an assessment or something.
Oh, absolutely.
You know, so, so, so that's, I, I know, yeah, but I'm, I'm just open for the public to understand that, you know, we just don't do, take that, you know, we don't, you don't push that problem over on us and then we, you know, the other taxpayers have to pay for it. So, yeah, there'd have to be, and I know this is, it's in planning stages, so I just wanted those questions out, thank you.
Mrs. Coker and then Mrs. Barnaby?
Yeah, you mentioned a special taxing district. Are they going to do like a C D D bond on that? And if we go to all these engineering expenses, are they going to, is that going to require a vote of all of the residents? I mean, can we be doing all this and then ending up with them saying, oh, we don't want to pay for it?
That's exactly why we're here.
Right. You want to take this round?
I'm going to take a stab at it. The way that the association is out there is that there's sub HOAs within the Master Association, but those sub HOAs have vested their authority in matters such as this to their Master Association. That's who is here today. There's different ways, really what we're talking about is engineering design work to say what would be acceptable to public works to meet the city's specs and standards, just like a road. And in order to do that, we have to engage engineers to do that type of work. The total cost for the engineering was, I want to say about three hundred and fifty, four hundred thousand? Two hundred and fifty-seven. Two hundred and fifty-seven, and a portion of that is the preliminary design, the second portion is the construction drawings for the improvements that would have to be made. We would take it basically in phases to start with for the preliminary design and then obviously get authorization and approval from the Master Association to go to the next step, which would be basically construction drawings and the like for any types of improvements. When you topic about improvements, you're talking about pipe diameter, pumping systems. Jim's the engineer, I'm the lawyer, let him deal with that, but they have concerns about it, so does fire, as far as the pressure into the condominiums for fire protection systems and the like. So that's what they have to engineer. In order to do that, I think the preliminary amount of the two fifty-seven is, I know there's a breakout in that. Now, the two fifty-seven was the overall project.
The two-fifty-seven was the overall project cost.
Right.
To get it to construction.
To get it to construction, so that is a design. But the association that is here today is the executive director and the attorney, and they have the funds within their reserves and would guarantee payment to the city as well as prepayment if necessary in order to do that. We're bringing this to you today for the purpose to get an endorsement to move forward. If you all say no, then it's no, and we go on and do other things. However, I'd point out that from a policy perspective, there's two important facts of why we're considering it. One is they're a user, a customer of our water utility that we sell water to. And secondly, they pay property taxes within the city. And so that's why we're considering it. And it's an organized association, it's fairly substantial that you're all familiar with, Long Cortez on the entranceway and other parts of entrance, but on that part of the city. And so that's why we're considering that. If you'd like to hear from the association as it relates to approval, what they would have to do, because there is, would have to be an assessment, there's some preliminary estimates. I forget what the calculations were. I could take a stab at it, I think it was about twenty, yeah, twenty-eight-hundred, twenty-five-hundred, I probably shouldn't, but per home. It would cost homeowners money.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could, going back to Councilman Coker's questions. Big picture here, what we're looking at, it wouldn't be a CDD, but essentially a special assessment district that would be, that the city would put in place and then the residents within Pine Brook-Ironwood would be assessed over time to pay for the improvements that we're talking about here. So...
Through their tax bill?
It would be on their tax bill as a separate special assessment item. To get to your other question about, you know, whether they would approve of entering into that, I think, you know, might let them address it. But different communities handle that in different ways. So, you know, in looking at the way that these types of districts, and it's not, it's not that unusual to have this type of a benefit district. A lot of communities have frameworks set up in their ordinances to allow for communities to come forward and say, hey, we want to do this. And you have, you know, a certain number of the property owners within that area have to sign a petition in order to initiate that process, to make sure that everybody's in favor of it. And so there's different ways that that's done in different communities just to, you know, to ensure that the folks that are going to be assessed are in favor of moving in that direction. But, so big picture, that's what is being proposed is that essentially the financing for those improvements would be, would be taken on by the city and then assessed back to the residents through a special assessment district.
Mrs. Barnaby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is very similar to what has been done in the past with the city, and the policy has always been that if someone comes to the city and they have something that has been privately taken care of, whether it's roads or sewers or water systems, the city policy has always been that it is brought up to our city's standards before we agree to take it over. We've had communities that have private roads, and the developer put the private roads in, and then ten years later, or twelve years, fifteen years later, they have to, they realize what the bill is going to be to maintain those roads, and they will come to the city and say, can you all take over the roads? And we have always said, and the policy has always been, if the roads were built to city standard, yes, we will consider that. If they are not built to city standard, you will need to bring it up to those standards before we will consider taking it over. And as far as the assessment is concerned, we just had someone in front of us that was here from Old Manatee. Back in the nineteen forties, the town of Manatee went bankrupt and asked the city of Bradenton to annex them in. And they had to have a special assessment to pay off their bills, and that was the way that the city agreed to annex them in. And my grandfather was on the council then. So that's how I happen to know a little bit about that, because I found some of his paperwork.
Right, and I think my part going through it for a few years with some of the board members and presidents of the different associations was it's taken a longer time because they do have, I believe, nine different HOAs under their master. So the presidents were together, but a lot of the people that, obviously, and the reason I asked what year, I knew that, in the seventies, that most of the people there now were not there when it opened. So they didn't understand it, and they were thinking the city should just automatically fix it for them. So the biggest thing that I think we have to do, and it's not about the six of us sitting up here, it's about, and it's not the people that are there today at their HOAs, it's about memorializing why, when I move in there, three, five, seven years from now, however long that assessment is, how we as a council, as well as the HOA boards, get that memorialization out to the new people that move in. Because it's a city water system as far as a lot of their residents think, and that's what we have, it's not. The city water system stops at the meter. And that's when I went to their HOA meetings, I went to some different boards, and I had to, I had to learn it, understand it too, but also then explain it to them. So I think that's the biggest, is about the explanation. Because we're borrowing the money, and they're just paying us back for it, and we're doing the system now, you know, as soon as we can. And, because again, like you said, the engineers didn't want to deal with nine HOA boards and a master board. So this is something I think is right, we need to do it, but we need to memorialize it. So when whoever else is sitting up here in the future isn't then getting bashed for something that a previous board did in a good light, but now is, you know, and I don't know, Jim, how long is this assessment going to be for?
Ultimately, that will be established. We've run some numbers for them to say if you did it for one year through ten years, but it was never intended to be, you know, a forever kind of thing. Depending upon what the final costs are and how they're willing to do it, that's, that would be the range that we would envision.
Because ultimately, if you're an HOA, which some of us have served on them and had to do things, if you don't have the money in your reserves to pay for something, then you assess each member, and the assessment to each member would be a hardship to them individually right now to pay the total amount. So the city's actually doing a good thing by offering an alternative, which it's also doing a good thing from the standpoint of our department because we help them out at times now, but we also don't want tens of thousands of gallons leaking into their lake, if that's going to happen.
Well, it has happened in the past. I think when I first started with the city, there was, they gave us a call to say, we can't figure out why our ponds on the golf course won't drain. And it turned out to be that asbestos cement water main had a break in it. And if I recall correctly, we ended up charging them for the water and gave them the break on the sewer bill that would have gone with it. It can amount to a lot.
We have Mr., I saw Mr. Sanders and then Mr. Roth.
Isn't that what you're doing in River Isle right now is re-lining some of the sewers in there? Even though it's, this is totally different, I'm not comparing one to the other, but that's what you're doing.
I will tell you that I wish the policies that we had in place now existed back when River Isles was taken over because we didn't kick the tires when we took over River Isles.
I understand, but River Isle needs to understand, we are absorbing that.
Oh, absolutely.
And that's, how many dollars? Two million? Million?
I think the, we're utilizing the appropriation from the legislation of five-hundred thousand, so I think the total over there is probably around eight-hundred thousand.
Eight-hundred thousand, alright. And that's just an example, but I want to make comment for the finances of our city. We're in very good financial shape, we've got fifty-five million dollars in reserves, so there's no reason why we can't loan them that money and assess it back. So I'm in favor of this because it's a good community, far as I'm concerned, that's my only comments. We'll have to work out the details later.
Mr. Roth?
Yeah, I'm just out of curiosity, is the, are the lines under the road?
That is the other benefit to us. Currently, the lines do not run in the roadway. The other aspect is, is that everybody thinks of Ironwood Circle as a complete circle. You have Pine Brook on one side, Ironwood on the other. Pine Brook is a public water system, it dead-ends. Ironwood is a private system, it dead-ends. This will give us the opportunity to loop that system, put the pipes in the roadway, and allow for easier maintenance down the road.
You, they're not in the roadway, you're going to put them in the roadway?
Yes.
Okay.
And I know that...
That, because that's the cost of a whole roadway too then?
Correct.
And I know that a lot of their buildings have been working with fire suppression over the years. That was the first thing ten years ago when I got on the council that we went to. So they're, the whole, all the different individual associations are working well to maintain and update their buildings for the future. So I know this is just one of those that will help all of that, so. Alright, so I think that's the staff report, I mean, I don't know, is there...
I'd just like to kind of finalize specifically what we're here for today. I would be requesting a motion that would authorize the administration through Public Works to engage engineering services for the benefit of the design.
I'll make that motion.
I think, Mrs. Barnaby, Ward Council person?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Up to two-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, six-hundred dollars. We would have to come back to you again once we get that engineering basically and probably have more formalized legislation than a voice motion.
Well, I will make the motion that we authorize administration to begin doing what they need to do to bring us this information. How's that? And I don't know if Mr. Thompson, who is their attorney, would like to speak to this, if there's anything that we neglected to put in, but, matter of fact, I'll tell you what, I will hold my motion until after Mr. Thompson's.
If you could, a couple of his words, Miss, I'd like to get in there for legal...
Start writing.
I appreciate that. Good morning, for the record, my name is Stephen Thompson, attorney with the law firm Anasby Thompson, and I'm representing the Ironwood Community Association. I do have a couple of the ICA board members here, Mr. Williams and Mr. Windham, they're here, and also have the property manager for the community association, Molly here. But also, I want to start by thanking Mr. Perry and the Public Works Department, Ms. McClellan. They have been extremely helpful in working through this issue. It's been going on for a long time, there's been a lot of stops and starts, and there were some good questions here. But I do think we now have the framework or the outline of a way to move forward, and it really is not going to result in any cost to the city of Bradenton. But again, this system was created back in the seventies, and I do a lot of development work. It's really the first time I've really seen a municipal water system that's managed and maintained by the association. And the problem with that is, they've done a pretty decent job up till now, but as we all know, associations are volunteers. They have wide range of expertise. And most of them, when they come on, all of a sudden, the ICA, well, what do we do? Oh, we maintain basically a city, or a municipal, if you may, water system. What does that mean? And so there are some issues, there are some problems. They don't have the expertise that your Public Works Department has. And that really is an issue, and not only is it an issue as far as being able to maintain and operate that system, it really comes into an issue of health and safety issues. You know, when that water system goes down and you don't have the expertise, that becomes a problem. If there's not adequate fire flow because of that, that becomes a problem. That really, I think, is the impetus, if you may, for us to work with the city to make sure that we can, you know, convey this system to the city. I want to go through some of the costs, we're talking about the engineering costs. And we initially thought, when we were negotiating, that we were going to enter into contract with the engineering company. I understand why they may be unwilling to do so, but we do have the money. And I heard the term two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-five seventy thousand dollars. We're able to put that money today in escrow. And we can work out the details, but again, we have the money, we've been preparing for this for a long time. So we are financially prepared to do so, and we'll, you know, if you need the check tomorrow to pay for this, I want to make sure that the city understands, we're not looking to the city to subsidize this. We understand it's ours, and what's going to happen, we're going to pay for the engineering costs, there are going to be construction costs that are going to be paid for, and then we're going to turn over a system that meets the city requirements. But again, I think the bottom line, it really becomes down to a public health, safety, and welfare issue. You know, people who are serving on this board are great people, they're just not trained. They're not experts in maintaining the water system. So we would request the vote today to move forward to get this thing started. I'm optimistic that we're going to see this to the end at this point in time. And I do want to thank Mr. Perry and Ms. McClellan for their initial, and we look forward to working with them in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a second that unless Ms. Barnaby has anything to add.
Let's get the motion and then...
Well, she, she got a motion pending.
No, she withdrew it right now.
I withdrew it.
Oh, I thought you said she wanted...
Mr. Rudisell?
Yeah, I was just going to say, just so everybody is on the same page, what we had talked about was for this initial phase for the design work, that we would enter into a reimbursement agreement with the association so they would be ultimately paying, so those costs are not going to be lumped into the assessment district. They're agreeing to pay those, so if that's part of the motion, that should be included, yeah.
I have a motion, it's rather technical, but it hits about three points I needed to hit, which is an authorization for the administration through the Public Works Water Utility to engage the engineering services of Jones Edmonds specifically, that's who does a lot of our engineering work, to perform design, construction, pre-construction services and engineering services, and obtain sufficient guarantees to ensure reimbursement to the city for payments made on behalf of the Ironwood Pine Brook Water Systems Improvement Project.
I will make that motion.
Alright, we have a motion by Ms. Barnaby and a second by Mr. Sanders.
I'll make a second with comment, Ms. Barnaby, I apologize, I did not mean to... We have a protocol here that projects in wards are approved or motions made by that ward council person as supportive. I read, misread you, I thought you were saying that you didn't want us to become bankrupt like Old Manatee, and I thought, I gotta, I gotta have a word in here, we're not bankrupt, we've got plenty of money to do this. So I thought you was going to vote against it, so that's the reason I rushed in and said, I didn't want this thing killed. So that was my excuse for thinking that you were against it, so I apologize, and so please accept.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in Ward three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Carrie's unanimously, thank you. Moving forward, it looks like we have Mrs. Caterina.
Good morning, Caterina Geragio Siren, CRA Executive Director. I'm here before you to present a proposed affordable housing project. The developer is HTG Housing Trust Group, and here with us is Rodrigo Paredes, Senior Vice President of Development. The proposed project is in Ward three, which is also in the Fourteenth Street CRA. It's for a hundred-and-twenty units of senior affordable housing. The income levels proposed would range from twenty-two percent, thirty percent, and sixty percent of the average median income of Manatee County. It's one-point-nine-nine acres, proposed along Ninth Street West and Twenty-third Avenue West. And it's a twofold request. In the morning here in front of City Council, the request from the city is to waive the impact fees, which the estimate is approximately two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand, and from the CRA later this afternoon for a funding request of six-hundred thousand, two-hundred thousand per year for three years. Like I said, they're here to do a presentation, and I'm also here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could just...
Yes, sir.
...get the presentation, hopefully the presentation will be brief because they're going to come to the CRA with a bigger ask, frankly. But I spoke with some counselors just about concerns regarding this project and the other project that HTG has, but I think it's important to recognize the location of this project on Ninth Street, pretty close to the southern border of Ninth Street and the county line. And it's a location that we are trying to reinvigorate and rebuild and repair over a period of time. Specifically, the project is targeted to a hundred-and-twenty units of... Specifically, the project is targeted to a hundred and twenty units of affordable senior housing. It's specific types of affordable housing. Specifically, I believe it's twenty, thirty, and sixty percent of AMI, which is average median income. So, you're talking about people of limited capacity that, that are a little bit older in life. Pretty good project down in that particular corridor, Fourteenth Street CRA. The amount that the city's contribution is at this point for the waiver of those impact fees for parks, police, roads, and a variety of things that are outlined in the, in the memorandums last page, the total of two hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars from the city. If you are to agree with this, you probably want to make a contingent, of course, on the CRA approval of the other piece. I'd also just point your attention to some of the financial participation that makes this project possible, which is a series of different types of loans, grants, and the likes. There are other affordable housing entities, workforce housing entities, and the like. There's quite a bit, and this particular amount, along with CRA contribution, is what's really to cover a funding shortage. If this was the first project, I'd be like all up saying, probably a really, really great, great thing. HTG has another project, and they've come back to us for a second time to ask for advanced participation, additional participation. We work in an environment of increasing construction costs. Just as recently as yesterday, inflationary comes, numbers come out. In the U.S., the market drops twelve hundred points, and, you know, the, the Market Committee is supposed to consider interest rate fluctuation. That's what we're building in. That, that's the landscape of the building world right now when you take on projects like this, cost uncertainty. We're being asked at a certain level to be the cushion for that uncertainty. It's, it's important to be mindful of that. It's a very worthy project. It, it's things that we want to do, I think, in the city, under our CRA. And of course, the city has a backstop to a contributor on that. But at some point, that uncertainty can't be fully borne by the, the city, in my opinion. It's just something to be mindful of. So, look at that participation agreement, if you would, and mindful of everything else with that. I'd love to hear more about the project. Thank you.
Let, let him give us a presentation, and we'll get council comments.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mayor. To open up the presentation, I guess I...
I can do it here from, Robin, I can do it.
Oh, there you go. Thank you. Good morning again. I'm sorry for the delay, and...
My name is Rodrigo Paredes. I'm VP of Development and Housing Trust Group, and I'm here to present Astoria on Ninth. I think that the city administrator gave us a, a good initial set of facts. And we'll get to a couple of details on some, on, on things you said in the presentation. Astoria on Ninth is an affordable housing development for seniors sixty-two plus. It's a hundred and twenty units. This is not our first affordable housing senior development. We've done already twelve so far this, the last ten years. We have five more to build. You can see some pictures here of, of four of them. Two of them I built myself. And, you know, the Valencia Grove Two is in Eustis, Lake County. Douglas Garden, Pembroke Pines, Broward County. Heron State's, it's Rivera Beach. Palm Beach County. Twin Lakes State's is Lakeland, Pasco County, Paul County. We've done a lot of this. We have a lot of experience doing it. This is our preferred type of tenants. They're always the most appreciative. We've done several developments already in Manatee County. We've, one of them is in the city. You probably know this one, the Addison, located at Sixth Avenue. We did this as a workforce housing like three years ago. And I, we believe it's been a success. I developed one in my, incorporated in Manatee County on Fifty-third Avenue. Oaks at Lakeside is called, ninety-six units. That's, this is a family demographic, you know, open, not extra restricted. You've talked about, and, and the city administrator talked about it, this development called River View Six. This development has had the most challenges with all the situations. But we believe we're getting to a right construction contract amount after some value engineering that we're doing, where we requested the county to give us a last set of contribution. It was gonna go to yesterday's support, board meeting for the county, but it, it, it was delayed for the twenty-second of September. And God willing, with that contribution, that development is done. We're not going to be asking for more money from the city. That what you've approved already for this development is, is good enough so that we can get started. And actually, the buffer is our own, our own guarantees. When we do these developments, we, we provide construction completion guarantees, tax credit compliance guarantees, environmental guarantees. And my company, my bosses, are the ones ultimately responsible and on, on the hook for, you know, for, for any shortfalls going forward. We believe we're very close on this development to start construction. We've bought all the land. But we're not talk, not, not here to talk about River View. We're here to talk about Astoria. Astoria is, we, we were lucky enough to also get another development funded recently in, in Manatee County, this one in Bradenton, in the actual city jurisdiction. And, you know, the only unlucky part of it is that it's in the worst time of storm and economics with the inflation and all that. We're going to talk about that in a moment. But the site is in, in the northwest corner of the Ninth Street and Twenty-third Avenue intersection. You, you, you see a map here. It's very well located. We believe this, this development is going to be a catalyst for future development, like all our developments. We have great architects. They do beautiful developments. You're going to be proud of this one. Almost two acres, a T-four zoning. We have a land to per, a, a contract to purchase seven acres of land, uh, seven parts of land. T-four zoning, again, we got funded at the end of last year, and we're almost ready to start construction. We've already submitted for building permits. We are almost getting the Form Based Coast approval, Form Based Code approval, and the, and the site plan approval. Here we have a little bit more of this development. It's going to be restricted to sixty-two-plus seniors, and we're going to have a partnership with Alonso Mourning Foundation. It's going to be a green building with green certification, high-efficiency systems, low-flow fixtures, and energy star appliances. We're going to have amenities, not the best or the highest, the highest standard ever on the amenities because of construction restrictions and site restrictions. But it's going to be nice. It's going to be good. We're going to have a nice club room, dog park. We're going to have a, a, a compactor for the trash. Besides the trash chute, we're going to have, most likely, we're going to be able to, to do a, a generator for emergencies. We have also some Florida housing pro, resident programs, like adult literacy, daily activities, some assistance in lighthouse keeping. And yes, you can see Alonso Mourning here. When we do the grand opening for this, you guys are all going to be invited, and we're gonna, you're gonna get to meet Alonso Mourning. You can take your basketball, so he can sign it, and it's, and he's a very nice man. He helps us on, on, on a lot of things regarding resident programs, and his foundation is a great partner to have. Some preliminary renderings. There's not really renderings, but more of like a depiction from the computer of, of how the building is going to look. It's, it, it's simple architecture based on the times. You know, we usually do balconies and stuff like that, but, but knowing that the construction cost was high, we, we, we kind of like made it, made it a little bit more conservative, and it's, but it's going to be very nice to see, and, and the tenants are going to be happy to have something they can pay rent for. Rents are probably going to be a thousand or less for the sixty percent AMI units. Here we have like the rent restrictions. We're going to be committing. We, we're going to have a fifty-year affordability period with Florida Housing on, on all the units, a hundred and twenty units. All of them are going to be rent restricted. Sixty percent AMI or lower. You see in this slide how the, that's going to be broken down. We have some twenty-two percent AMI units, three of them. We have thirty percent AMI units, twelve of them, and the rest are going to be sixty percent AMI units. Florida Housing hired a servicer, a mariner, to, to underwrite this development, so that they're going to do a credit underwriting report that's going to go to the Florida Housing Board and get it approved. We're trying, we're, we're hoping we can get that approval from Florida Housing on October twenty-eighth. But for that, we need to finalize getting all the commitments that we need so that they can be on that credit underwriting report. And that's why we're here in front of you today, so that if you guys approve what we are requesting, we can incorporate that into the, into the report. The two important things to point out, Delora has commitments to house veterans, so the veterans are preferred residents. And there's going to be, there's already an MOU with the county so that the county can give us referral for people with special needs on at least nine of the units. You can see also in this slide how we're gonna, we have six of the units designed for mobility impaired and designated for special needs for, 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 for the very low end of the twenty-two or thirty percent AMI. And we have three more units designed for, for hearing or visual impaired. All our, all our quality in the construction, what we, what we do in the amenities in the units is top-notch. It's not excessively expensive, but it's good enough that it will last, that the tenants are going to be happy. They're going to feel proud. They're going to feel like they, you know, their life got realized at the end. One last moment at, at, at the end of their life, they're going to be able to go into a unit that they feel proud to be, to be living in and to be part of, of that community. We do community rooms that, that have music, that have activities. The sixty-two-plus tenants love to use the amenities, and they're great tenants. But while we have a situation, usually I would not come along in front of, 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 on all the developments we've done, especially elderly, we haven't had the need to go in front of municipalities to ask for additional funding. But it is the case that if we, that we need to kind of make that happen with this last effort. We have construction materials that went up historically, you know, usually inflation in, in the U.S. where construction is four, five, six, seven percent. It's been thirty percent the last two years, so you can imagine how that could affect the budget. The ten-year treasury rate is not helping either. The feds are increasing that. We have restricted rents, and you can see on the bottom of this slide, we cannot simply increase rents because we have restricted rents. So, we cannot overcome that challenge by trying to charge more. So, the only way to kind of fix that is with the help of, of the community. Like, it's going to take a village to do this type of developments, and that's what this slide is about. Can, you can see on the right, on the left of this slide, how all the sources of funding we're going to have. The permanent loan there, that eight point one million is going to come from a Freddie tax exempt loan through, with bonds issued by the state of Florida. The Florida, and Florida State is also with the Zadelski Funds, adding nine point six million dollars to this development in sale loan, okay? An ELI loan. ELI loan is just for, for those thirty percent AMI units to be even targeted for deeper needs. Also, the federal government is coming up with a big amount of fifteen point seven million dollars in tax, in, in low-income housing tax weighted equity. We have an allocation for that. That's a very valuable allocation. We don't want to lose it. The municipalities don't want to lose it, and that's, that, and, and we have certain timeframe restrictions for those things, and that's why we, we, we're here for you, so that this municipality doesn't lose this federal funding. Another piece of federal funding we have is National Housing Trust Funds, seven hundred and thirteen thousand. That's to help on the twenty-two percent AMI units. And the Manatee County already approved and gave us a, a commitment for a one point two million dollar loan. And one of the things they wanted to make sure that happens is that the city also, because this is in Siri just jurisdiction, the city also makes a contribution. There's also a million dollars of fees that my company is foregoing, that that's considered a source to, to, to make it balance. So, a total source of thirty-six million, thirty-six point four. It's, that's our total sources, but the development is costing thirty-seven point four. So, we have a ninety, nine hundred and sixty-one thousand gap. And that's why we're here to kind of finally solve that we're done. We're not going to come back again to ask for more money. It's done. This development, it's a go. The two requests that Caterina spoke about are that the six hundred thousand loan that we're asking from the CRA this afternoon, it's easily paid in three draws, one per year of two hundred thousand. The terms are there in the screen, zero percent non-amortizing interest rate for a fifteen-year after, after the project has achieved placing service. And, you know, of course, it has to be subordinated to all the other loans that we, that I showed you in the prior slide. Then the second thing, and it's the one we're talking about for this item in the agenda, is to get impact fee waivers. This is a very usual thing that the city does for affordable housing. But with that and the six hundred thousand, we are completed on all our, and balancing sources and uses. And, you know, it's going to be a, a successful development. Let me see what else I have. I think that's it. Hey, I don't know if you have...
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that the timing of it is because they need to do the application on their end with different sources. So, today, they're only asking that it's, if you approve it, that it's reflected in the minutes. That's the only need for them to proceed and put in the application. And a commitment letter signed from the CRA, again, if it's approved. In the future, we will be doing a Delora and land use restriction agreement, and we'll bring it back to you for reconsideration. So, these are the only legal items that we're discussing today.
Okay. I've got an order. What's going to happen, it's going to be to ask questions. I'm going to go first, then Mr. Sanders, Ms. Barnaby, then Mr. Roth. It's kind of who I saw, the signs up first, so. Couple of questions. Obviously, you know, I think it's a great project and a great area. When you talk about the loan from the county, is that a forgivable loan? Or is that a loan that's going to be paid back?
It's going to be paid back after, after we, after the perm loan expires in year fifteen, after, after stabilization.
Okay, and with, with the cooperation between the city and the county, obviously, that's very important. We've been working that ever since I've been, as mayor, trying to, to work together, and we have a great relationship with, with all of them through the two municipalities, or county and the city. So, that brings a question. So, then, where this location is, is almost on the border of the county as you get a little farther down and around. So, who is going to get the right to live there? You know, I mean, I know you tell me what the scenario is, but are you going to have to be a city resident, or you're going to have to be a county resident? Because you could fill that all up with county residents, and, you know, there's no impact or vice versa. So, is there some sort of stipulation or regulation of it's going to be half and half?
So, the light, the low-income housing tax credits is the biggest source of funding, has a, an IRS code, like, you know, stat, for, federal statute requirement that all this low-income housing tax credit developments need to be available for the general public. So, that'd be, that's been interpreted as that we cannot really make a, a special restriction. There's some exceptions, like for veterans and people with special needs. That's the only two that we have there that I showed in the presentation that have, but just for some amount of units. That doesn't mean that, of course, when we open up this for the public, the first people we can contact is Caterina and all the, and all, and, 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 and the cities, so that we can, you know, try to get you, all the, all the people that you may have on the list to be first served. So, we can do that type of things, but it's not something that it can be written to because of IRS code.
Okay. So, that's the questions for this project. You had brought up River View Six, that you're going to the county for a loan on the twenty-second.
Yes.
If that is unsuccessful, does it kill River View Six?
To be honest, a hundred percent honest, chances are yes. It would kill Riverview Six if we don't get that money. It's, right now, it's just very difficult to get that development going. We've done everything we can. We've been working on it for six months, and it's just one of those developments that are in a special zoning. You, you guys selected it because of its location, but it's a T-five zoning opposed of, as opposed to this, that is a T-four zoning. So it's a much more expensive project, it's also less units, and it's not that effective. But, you know, we did something great, at least that we can, we, we bought all those parcels of that block that were five different sellers. And, you know, we've, we've already bought, you know, so something will come out of it. I'm not sure what, but I, I, I am positive that the county would, would help us.
And how much are you asking from the county?
One point four million for Riverview.
All right, and then I just have a, a comment, and it's more of an HTG overall comment for our community. We have had some concerns at some of your properties here in town. And I know I've talked with Mrs. Coachman, because she's been getting people calling. And, and a lot of it may not be the, the logistics of what's right and wrong, but it's how we're doing things. So I just wanted to publicly state, if you can help us, I know it's not about this specific thing, but it's an opportunity to help the residents that live in there, and a lot of it is education. And it's not what you say, it's how you say. And I think that, you know, and from what I've understand, since we've reached out to some of the management, that it has gotten better. So I would just appreciate if you'd pass that on down the management ranks to continue to, to work with the residents in your current locations to make sure that, you know, we're working for the best forward. And it's not just one, it's been several, so.
I apologize about those problems, and I think that our company tries to do the best on, with our relationships with the, the community and with our tenants. I think I know what you're talking about, I'm not entirely sure, but I can tell you that I have, I'm the, I'm the director of development in my company. I'm not the management director, but I have a plan in place to kind of fix some of what you're saying, and I think it's gonna get better.
Good, well, we appreciate it.
Good to hear.
Yep, so it's important that, you know, we all work together, and, you know, we all have different political policy differences sometimes, but the overall goal is to try to bring it in which, if you look at our list of affordable housing that we've done in the city of Bradenton, and now with the relationship that we have with the county, because a lot of these projects, if we don't buy it in together, you know, and as Mr. Perry said all along, a lot of people don't know where you cross one boundary to the other, and it's about housing people. So if we don't do this together, and, and again, you know, people don't realize that close to sixty percent of the money that we collect in the city for taxes goes to the county. So it is all of our money, so I think it's important that we advocate with the county to do that, so. And I'm glad this is here and now, so we can, we can advocate with our, the meeting on the twenty-second to make sure that they're still proactive for that, so.
Please, I would appreciate it, and yes, respect is our first priority, and, and trust is, is part of our name.
Thank you, Mayor, for bringing that up.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Coach.
Even once the project is completed, then there are citizens of Bradenton living in those units, and we still care about how their, how their quality of life is beyond. Thank you.
So thank you, Ms. Coachman. So I'll order Mr. Sanders and then Mrs. Barnaby.
Thank you, Mayor. I a hundred percent support this, as you know, and I'm on every housing board there's possible. If there's one I haven't missed, then please tell me about it, I'll tend it. I just came back from Florida Housing Coalition in Orlando, and I now became pretty good friends with the executive director that finances you, which is, is, and we, we've talked about a lot of things, and a lot of things down the road in the future, and how it's done and so forth, and I won't get into details of that. But that is an important factor, that, that I, as a councilwoman, have that connection with that for future monies, because I think I can have some influence on where some of these monies come from, because it's millions of dollars, you know, out of Sadowski funds and et cetera. So I'm a supporter of that and a promoter of that, an advocate, so I wanna make that statement. You're asking for nine-hundred-and-some-odd-thousand, you're asking for, this is approximately, three-hundred-thousand dollars in impact fees from the city and six-hundred-thousand dollars from the CRA, is that correct? All right, so six-hundred-thousand, let, let me, let me, one-hundred-and-twenty units, let, let me give a scenario here. We bring in five to six million dollars a year from the CRA in TIF funds, correct? So if we did, we could do ten of these. That'd be a correct number, ten of these. We could, we could put in a thousand, twelve-hundred affordable housing units per year. If we dedicated, if we decided as a board to dedicate, to, to dedicate these funds to affordable housing and remove slumming blight, which, which I believe I'm an advocate for, that is a CRA, that would be monumental. And I'm proposing and beating my chest up here that we do that. It doesn't matter about who the developer is, but these have to be fifty-year deals that are truly affordable, not attainable, not workforce, not this other. So I'm an advocate for that, and I think we could build possibly twelve-hundred units a year if we would dedicate those funds to those purposes, which, that, that's, that's my advocacy. So the, the county needs to participate. We got received, well, let me put it this way. St. Petersburg was honored at this Florida Housing Coalition Conference a couple of weeks ago. They put in your wellware. You was there, you was there. Seventy-four percent of their ARPA funds went into that. I don't know what the dollar amounts of that, do you know the dollar amounts of that? It was seventy-four percent of their ARPA funds, and I know they received a heck of a lot more than we did. We received ten million, they probably received thirty million or more. And so they put seventy-four percent into affordable housing. Great for them, what a, what a wonderful public servants they are. Sarasota County put in, I think, twenty-five percent, like thirty-some-odd million. Manatee County actually put in fifteen million, so they should be able to give you some money out of that. Now, they're, they were dedicating it to veterans over in the jail, I don't know where that's at. But I've proposed to them that they take that funds and spread it around somewhere else, because I think that might be too controversial for us, the county, but that's not my say, that's the county's say. Because there's other areas that we are looking at in Bradenton Housing Authority to tear down and build some more units, probably another two or three hundred units in there. So I'm, I'm gonna advocate for my friends at the county commission to take that money and move that over there, and Bradenton Housing Authority is on board with this. So I didn't have anything to really do, well, it may, if you wanted to bid, bid, bid the project. So we have got, one, number one of our crises that we have in Florida and our area is housing. It's out of control. It, you know, we are not maintaining enough housing for our workforce. Now, we have a lot of service industries, including the city of Bradenton, to provide services for the community, and they have no place to live. And they can't drive, gas is high, and if, why would you want your employee to drive? So we got a lot of hotels, motels, service jobs that we have to step forward. Venice just did this for, and, but of course, they were able to do things that's more exact, because it was in city, city employees, to, to help the restaurants, businesses, local businesses downtown, to maintain, because they were getting complaints that, I can't, I can't hire people. I, I, they, they can't drive, they can't do this. So they dedicated their money to go to housing just for the service industry, the restaurants, the small, small businessmen. So kudos to them, they've done the right thing. I'm promoting that we do the same thing. And Mr. Perry, you said something about we can't do this forever, but we've got fifty-five million dollars in the bank. That's, that's almost a full-year operating expenses for our, for our city. And if we can't afford three-hundred-thousand, shame on us. We can afford that twenty times over. We need to be advocating for twenty of these projects, not just one. There's no question in my mind, this is a no-brainer. And so I know that's a long, dedicated speech, but people, I think, need to hear what I say about that, because we, you know what, we, you know what the city of Bradenton dedicated out of their ten-million-dollar funds? Zero dollars. And I, I don't think that's right. And so this three-hundred-thousand, build ten more.
Thank you, Ms. Barnaby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very familiar with this area, having grown up not too far from there. And I'm sitting here thinking, I'm not sure where the closest bus stop is, but if you all can look at working with the county to have a bus, sorry. If we could look at, at having a bus stop located on your side of the street, near or at your property, I would appreciate that. I would also like to encourage you to perhaps do what some of the other assisted living facilities do around here, where they have six to nine passenger, they look like golf carts, for lack of a better term, because I could see people in this area, it's right near McKechnie, I'm sorry, it's right near LeCom. And you've also got a microbrewery, two microbreweries in other areas there. So it might be something that you could come back and speak with us about as, as something that we might be able to either help you find a sponsor to fund it or look at funding having small amounts of my, what I would call micro-transportation to assist the residents there. I quite frankly don't see them hopping on the scooters that we put on round town, I may be wrong.
A three-wheel scooter.
I, that, that's, there, there's an option. But those were, thinking today, when we were looking at, at the location and knowing what's around there, I think that that would be a wonderful thing, if, if it's something that you could do.
Commissioner, if I may, I think, I just wanna make two clarifications, but yeah, for sure, we're willing to discuss anything anybody in the city wants to do. We, we wanna, we, we are partners with the city, right? We're gonna be, if you guys want something specific, we will try to figure out a way to make it happen. The only clarification I wanna make is that this is not assisted living facility, it's independent living facility.
Right, understood.
And, 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 yeah, well, the, the thing that, and, and my assistant has this information, he'll, he's probably trying to, to text it, text it to me right now, but there is a bus stop in the corner. Not sure exactly when.
There is.
Yeah, I've seen it, yeah.
And there's another one for that, another route, like across, but so, so, so there is transportation, because that's actually one of the Florida Housing requirements to get funded. So.
And I think, just speaking to that real quick, I think if we need to, if there's a bus stop across the street, so they go the other way, we can work on some pedestrian safety issues on that street. And I know there's, and Mr. McClellan, that ninth street that way has got a lot of plans in the future for it of different ways and even dedicated, just go down Cortez Road and take one of their, from Twenty-Sixth Street to Forty-One, we could take one of their lights and move it over there if you, I get a lot of grief on that, those lights. So, yeah, funny, but all right, so any other comments, or? Yep, okay, Mr. Roth and then Mrs. Coker.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that, you know, I've always been told there's really no such thing as affordable housing because of cost of dirt. And now, really, what we're really talking about is now, because this was thirty-seven million and one-point-seven million in land, that's thirty-five million. So it's, you know, it's really, now it's the cost of dirt and the cost of rising material cost is what we're running into. So this is where, one of those deals where if the, the, the community is gonna step in and do the right thing to do this, at some point in time, as Mr. Perry started off, you know, there may be a point to where there isn't any money to spread around and stuff like that. I don't know what's gonna happen at that point in time in the future. You know, I think that when we get, don't, we don't have incentives, like even just the impact fees, well, then probably everything will just be market rate, and, you know, and, and it, it, it gets really dicey there. But we're fortunate that we're in a position right now to where we can, we can do this type of stuff. And, you know, I'm just fully supportive of it, but it's, you know, affordable housing is only affordable when the community, you know, steps in with public funds and assists.
If I may address that, Councilman Roth, I think that you're a hundred percent right. The, the situation nowadays, like, let's say, every year there's funding applications that we can submit to Florida Housing so that we can get this type of funding, and then, you know, do like we did on Addison and Ochsad Lakeside, that we didn't even have to come to the city to ask for money. That would be the ideal situation, and that's how we, ninety-nine percent of the times, we do. Now, what's going on, it's kind of like a crazy environment of a lot of things going against us. But today, if I'm gonna be submitting an application for, for funding in twenty-twenty-two or twenty-twenty-three, my focus is on land that is free. So housing authority developments, like it was mentioned, municipality land. We, that's the type of things that we can afford, especially because the land, the, the land sellers are even more expensive right now. Thank God we got this under contract like two years ago, and we're still having close on the land. But, but that even, even, even if you see that price of the land today, it's, it's a good price. You know, we have it locked. And, and, yeah, I appreciate your comment, and I think we, we need to, to make any future development really, you know, be sustainable on its own without having to come to municipalities all the time.
What was the cost of that land?
Mrs. Coker.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to.
So, I lost my train of thought. Oh, I like, I really like the project, it looks great. I think it's a great, actually, I like the location down there, I think that could help with a lot of that. I think my, my concern is that, is the Riverview project not going forward. I would like to know that that's gonna ha, I mean, that's, that's just a concern for me. And I, if we can't have it known by today, how long are we tying up these entitlements? If, or, I mean, are we just gonna, I don't know, that, that's a problem for me. I don't know how to respond to that. And then I think at some point, we also need to consider with the impact fees, I mean, those impacts are still gonna be there. And I think the first people to the table, yes, you know, we entice them, but I think that there are a lot of people out there doing affordable housing, and there's a reason why that is, because it is very profitable for them. And I wanna help them, I wanna get it there, but, you know, I, I just, I, I am a little concerned about the assumption that we can just give away the impact fees. But I, I like doing it for a project like this. But I just think we need to keep that in mind.
Mayor, Councilwoman, I, I, I understand exactly what you're saying. There's two things that, that is important to understand. It's first regarding, yes, there's a lot of affordable housing developers. Well, it's kind of like a niche community, but yeah, there's probably ten or more affordable housing development companies. Housing Trust Group just happens to be a successful, successful in winning applications. Now, not all of the developments that are gonna come to you are gonna be affordable housing developments, even if they want to. The reason is not, it's, it's very limited sets of funding that the county, that the state and the federal government puts out there every year. So to give you an example, there was, one year, there was, there were two-hundred applications for affordable housing submitted in the, in the forty-seven medium counties, Manatee County is a medium county. And of course, they only fund like seven a year. So we have, you have to be good at it, you have to be lucky a little bit, but most importantly, you have to be a good developer to be able to make this happen. We've had more than this four lands under contract in Manatee County and, and, and to try to get developed. These are the ones that got funded, thank God, because we were good in our application system, but things changed. Regarding the impact fees, you know, we, 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 we hear you. I think that there's, there's a moment where the, the, the actual people that are, that, that, that work for, for, for the services regarding the impact fees also need housing. So it's kind of a win-win situation, the way I see it.
I'm just gonna make a comment talking about a few things and then what you just said. I think Mr. Roth and I remember back seven, eight years ago, when we couldn't win anything. We were, we were like stymied out of it, and it was like tax credits and all that, and we were doing things and doing, and just couldn't win anything. And then a couple of private came in and won something, so, and we, we had contributed a little bit, because they didn't really ask for a lot, but they got it privately. And then all of a sudden lately, you know, we've been giving some more, so I don't disagree in concept with. So I don't disagree in concept with a lot of the stuff that's said. But now we are starting to see some of that fruits of that. And whether it's HTG, which has been more of a successor in our county, which, and more in the city. So, so I think, you know, yes, some of that is there with the impact fee credit. But as we grow forward and we see some other projects that we're gonna be doing, which now to give a little, we're getting a little more. And this is a unique situation with the affordable housing, senior housing, workforce housing. You know, because, and, and some people, when you give them a small impact fee, a private development brings back a huge return in other ways. This does in two ways. You give a bigger impact fee credit, but you don't get maybe the tax that you would out of it. But you're getting the industry, the people, the, the people that can use it the most. So, yes, Mr. Sanders and then Mrs. Coachman.
We've given away impact fees ever since I've been here, millions of dollars. We just did a groundbreaking on nine-twenty, we waived all those impact fees. And those, those rents at sixteen-hundred, only for a couple, three more years. We waived seven years of, of ad blom tax. Hotel across the street, we waived fifteen years, we waived all their impact fees. We had five hundred apartments out there in my neighborhood, we waived the impact fees. We waived a lot of stuff, a little over two million dollars. And that rent is four thousand dollars a month. Because I get those phone calls. To say that we can't do this, it's crazy. To say that we should do this is responsible government.
My comment was meant towards looking forward, that's all. Not, not backwards.
Everybody said.
Look, fifty-five, that just happened, that, that just happened, not, that's not backwards. We haven't, that's hasn't even been developed yet.
I said looking forward.
Mrs. Coachman, we're gonna move on to Mrs. Coachman.
Are we ready for, may I make a motion?
Sure, yes ma'am.
Move to approve waiver of impact fees for the Astoria on Ninth Affordable Housing Project.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Mrs. Coachman, a second by Mr. Sanders to approve.
Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Perry.
As it relates to Councilwoman Coopers, within the project description, it requires basically submission or loan locks by November of this year. And I believe it's construction financing by March of twenty-three. And so if we make this commitment, there probably should be a time limit on how long the commitment is good for. We use these commitments as an incentive, obviously, to spawn action. And in this case, if these guys can put their paperwork together, make their numbers work, close up their financing gaps, then they would probably like to get moving on with it soon. We'd like them to move soon, I'm sure. And we don't want it being the year twenty-twenty-eight, when, when the project comes out of the ground. So you may want to put a time limit on it.
If I may say something about timeline, it's, thanks, as an administrator. I think that the, to understand the timeline, we, we're getting, the state contributed an additional amount of funding after this whole situation exploded on us, the inflation. So we originally had an allocation of, I think, four million, and then they're coming up with another four million that they're putting up. To meet the requirements of that new funding they're giving, an, an addition, we have to start construction the first quarter of this, of twenty-twenty-three. So what we're trying to do is just get the commitment, so it could be underwriting on, on, on October. Then after we get all the underwriting finalized, with all the conditions approved, and loan documents drafted by attorneys, your attorneys are gonna be on the calls with the Florida Housing Attorneys and all that. Everybody agrees on documents, we close, hopefully in January, we start construction. It's built in a year, hopefully.
All right, so we have a motion and a second with those, I guess, stipulations.
Do we need to make an amendment for a time?
Perhaps you probably won't.
Right.
I'll leave it up to you.
Well, the, the CRA is twenty, CRA's got time limit, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, so.
What, what, I just want to point out one thing. You know, it, it's interesting when we talk about incentives, and, and Councilman Sanders had a good point about the nine-twenty project. But the nine-twenty incentives were basically done on a master agreement five years ago or four years ago. There was, there was a long-term master agreement, when these things were agreed to ways back. Sometimes, well, from my understanding, that's the way it was done. And so sometimes at the point you're doing the incentive, you have to incentivize the project. Perhaps a couple of years later, you don't have to. And I think that's related to the hotel in the downtown area as well. At that time, we wanted to incentivize the hotel. Now we see we don't need incentives for downtown development. It's just something to be mindful of. I don't really want to argue with it, that was my understanding. Perhaps some.
It's not true.
When I looked at the loan documents, they were, the, the documents on the master development agreement, it was a time back, I don't know if it was two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, but, yeah.
Wasn't there.
Okay.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. And I think there's already kind of a prelim timeline with your funding from the government. And then the CRA can put that in. So I, I think if we're all okay with that, I think we're in a good spot. I'm hearing nothing further, we'll start the vote in Ward four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Carries five to zero. Thank you, thank you, and, and thank you for looking into the other that we talked about. I think that'll be helpful for everybody. So at this time, I'm gonna ask for it to take a ten-minute recess, just so some people can use the restroom and get a drink of water. So it is eleven oh four, we'll be back at eleven fifteen.
Just sit here.
No, you'll duck right behind that.
All right, thank you, Ms. Singer. We'll call back to order.
Okay, are we ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Robin Singer, Planning Community Development Director. Your August tenth meeting, you had a presentation by Dover Cole regarding the Form Base Code. And one of the things that came up were prohibited and special uses within the area of the Form Base Code. And there were a number of uses that were discussed for the possibility of establishing a zoning in progress to allow us to study those uses and put new codes in place to define those uses and possibly either prohibit or allow by special use or just allow outright. And so those uses included the sale secondhand merchandise, pawn shops, drug treatment facilities, drug treatment clinics, homeless services facilities, and homeless residential facilities. What we're really talking about, this is the use chart from your Form Base Code. So basically, after defining the uses in Chapter twelve of the Form Base Code, we then indicate under this use chart how they should be dealt with for future applications. First, regarding secondhand merchandise and pawn shops, Form Base Code doesn't have any definitions and they're not listed. However, land use regulations do list secondhand stores, and it does include pawn shops. So I think if we're talking about uses in the Form Base Code, which is our downtown area overlaps in great part with our CRA, that we want to talk about maybe allowing thrift shops and antique shops, but perhaps prohibiting pawn shops. So that would require a separate and different definition to be included in the code. Under drug treatment facilities and clinics, Form Base Code does not define or list substance abuse treatment separately from other medical uses. However, land use regulations does talk about them as a group care facility. It can include treatment centers. And so I think we're talking about maybe a separate designation for definition. We do list clinics currently as permitted uses, but we would want to separate that out when it's dealing with substance abuse treatment. And then our recommendation for now, because they are allowed in other parts of the city, that they would be prohibited in the Form Base Code area. And then third, grouping together homeless services and homeless facilities. Clearly, we have a lot of that already in the Form Base area of the Form Base Code. The code is not clear on it, doesn't really list or define those uses. However, because there are already a number of them within the area of the Form Base Code, they would be grandfathered in. However, we'd suggest that in the future they be dealt with as special uses. In other words, they go through a public hearing process that goes through the Planning Commission and City Council for approval, and that we establish some unique criteria and standards for those particular uses. Now, we've written up, the city attorney has written up the zoning in progress for 180 days. I don't think it's going to take us 180 days to process the text amendment through Planning Commission, City Council. However, 180 days in case there are any legal challenges, it kind of protects the city and allows you to consider those. I would say in the case of new drug treatment facilities or clinics or homeless facilities, we don't have any pending applications. We did have one application for reuse of a property that included a pawn shop. That's kind of how it came to our attention. So that particular case has already kind of been in under the line. They've been to the DRC. So I would consider that particular spot, and I can't recall the exact address of it. It was either on Ninth or Fourteenth where they wanted to establish one. So they would kind of be under the line as far as the zoning in progress is concerned. But otherwise, we basically, what this allows us to do is postpone any approvals of any of these uses until the City Council has dispensed with the matter, either by ending the zoning in progress or approving an ordinance that addresses those uses, so.
Questions? Yes, Mrs. Barnaby and then Mrs. Coker. She had her card.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that I understand and that we're being clear on this. If these establishments are already in operation, it does not retroactively go back and make them leave?
Correct.
Thank you.
Ms. Coker and then Mrs. Coachman.
Yeah, I, and maybe, maybe this is included in indoor amusement center, but I thought we had also talked about some of the gaming, internet cafe kind of things.
I apologize if I missed that one, but I don't recall that.
That was one of the things I was concerned about.
Okay.
And also massage parlors. Maybe that's indoor amusement. I don't know.
That's a good one.
But I'd like to see it, you know, especially as.
And I, I don't know, I'm looking at the city attorney, what happens after if you approve this zoning in progress or this resolution? Then it gets posted and noticed in a newspaper? And so I don't know, can we make amendments to it today before it's approved?
Yes.
So we could include those uses as well?
Right, particularly if they were items that were discussed last time, I think it's appropriate to include them.
And I apologize if I didn't include those. So specifically, gaming.
Those internet cafes and the massage parlors. I mean, obviously, they're legitimate, that's one thing.
There's a difference between a licensed massage therapist performing a medical service and.
And the indoor amusement.
Trixies.
See, I wasn't thinking that of indoor amusement.
Mrs. Coachman.
Thinking more of like, I don't know, I can't think of the zone or jump, whatever, you know, those kind of indoor.
Trampoline type.
Yeah, yeah, I was thinking of that.
There's some out there now that have been, there was one just created over in Port Coast Road that the grandkids go to, so.
Yeah, I missed that part. But I heard you say that any of the homeless facilities, like turning points, will be grandfathered in. Now, from what I understand, turning points is bursting at the seams. Now, should they want to extend that building? And maybe the decision has been to not necessarily approve of in that, you know, such a facility in that area, what would happen?
If we make it a special use, then they'd come back through for an expansion of a special use. In some cases, we have to look at our language on the expansion of special use. Sometimes it may only, if you're just doing it on the property, it wouldn't necessarily require a public hearing. But if they go beyond their current boundaries, then perhaps it would come in for a special use. So we can, we can take a look at both the language for special use and.
And then, in that note, though, if they cannot extend the building, but yet they're. They're over capacity in terms of the needs, would we maybe help them relocate or?
Yeah, I mean, and if you provide for it as a special use, they could relocate. They could. And we'd have to determine which zoning districts you would want to do that in.
Let me just interrupt this, not rudely, but trying to say that, that there is some talk right now with the county administration and the leadership there to see how Mr. Perry and I and the county administrator and some of the chairman have discussed some things about how we make our urban core better while serving who serves the, you know, different groups even better. So that is a discussion that we've been having that will be coming forward more and more. But it's also the thing where we're not trying to run somebody out. We're trying to make their services even be more successful in a bigger space with, you know, because they've got a lot of investment there. So if we can make it better, how can they say no to that?
Make it better for them as a facility as well as for the community around it.
Right, and a lot of room to grow. But that's a win-win. And so there has been some talks about, because we are getting a lot of complaints from the surrounding businesses. And if we want to change our urban core, we've got to figure out the scenarios how to make it better. And I think that's, you know, because we saw one business already went out, another one's come in right next to it, and it's already struggling. Yeah, so, but there's a lot of opportunity. It's just, we have a great relationship with the county. Let's continue to put forward as well as make turning points ten times better than it can be.
Yes.
As a community, not just the city of Bradenton.
Yeah, the need is great, so.
So Mr. Roth, I saw you had a quick comment.
Yeah, yeah, so on that note, because we were, this board had been under the impression that we'd always had a moratorium on this, and found out later several, several planning directors ago didn't, didn't follow through on instructions. So this was supposed to already have happened. I would hope that this would, zoning in progress would say to current facilities, you're fine where you are, but if you expand service, you can't expand services. This is what it was supposed to be a long time ago. There will be no expansion of services. I know we've told that to Salvation Army because we had a different agreement, but that's, that's what I would hope that this would do. And I would like to point out that, you know, Manti County is a very big county. And trying to say that all homeless services have to happen inside the city of Bradenton is ridiculous. And also say not only they have to happen inside the city of Bradenton, it should be clustered into the downtown area as much as possible, is more ridiculous. So we're, we're trying to get behind fixing something that should have been fixed a long time ago. And to be quite honest, I mean, there's, what, 400,000 citizens in Manti County? I think burdening the 56,000 citizens of Bradenton with all homeless services is just grossly unfair.
There's opportunity to make it better for the clients that they serve, and let's work towards that while also helping our urban core develop.
As long as it's somewhere else, I'm fine with that.
I can't believe you said that.
All right, any other comments for Mrs.?
That's a question for our county legal council.
Yes, sir.
Are we okay with doing a moratorium on public services like this that help the veterans, homeless, et cetera? Are we exposing ourselves to civil litigation for preventing these programs to move forward?
Just to clarify, we're not adopting a moratorium on, on those services. This is a zoning in progress, which essentially is just putting people on notice, excuse me, putting people on notice that the city is intending to review these regulations. And so you can't submit an application and, and say that you're doing it in reliance on the existing zoning that's in place. So it basically just tells people, hey, we're looking at these items. We're going to be potentially making changes. And so for this period of time, you can't come in and submit an application and think that you can come in under the old regulations. So we will look at those types of issues once it's determined what is actually proposed. What I'm hearing today is that those are proposed to be a special use permit. So they would still be allowed subject to special use approval.
I just want to make sure it's not like the pandering and so forth, that we are overstepping that would cause us a civil litigation with civil rights for those entities that provide services for veterans and others. And this is seen, I know it's a zoning issue, but it's, it may be seen as a restrictive thing that we're doing against those services.
Yeah, and those are the types of things that we will look at once, once we understand what is being proposed by staff, then we'll, we'll take a look at that. But, but you're right. I mean, it does have the potential to implicate, you know, First Amendment or other issues depending on what those uses are.
Thank you.
Mrs. Barnaby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution twenty-two dash sixty with the additional information or request the additional, or the adding of internet cafes and massage parlors and authorize staff to proceed with an ordinance to amend the Form Base Code accordingly.
Do we have a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second it with the, I think it should be the gambling internet cafes, not all internet cafes.
Oh, okay, well, I've.
I think that's what they're referencing. I think that's the common term.
Okay.
Well, yeah, as long as you change it to gambling, not just internet, because there's cafes that's internet friendly all over.
That's.
I mean Starbucks. Starbucks, you'd eliminate them.
No.
I don't know what you're calling internet then. I don't know what your definition is.
Remember, all this stuff is coming back to you in ordinances, so we will weed through the definitions, things like that. Gambling's already illegal, so you don't have to prohibit gambling internet cafes. So I think internet cafes and massage parlors is fine for the purposes of this resolution. And we'll go back and look at how, how those terms should actually be defined.
Really? I've never been to an internet cafe before.
All right, so there's a motion and a second by Ms. Coker. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll start the vote in.
Google that.
Board five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
And four.
Yes.
Carries five to zero. Moving further, discussion of land use restrictive agreements for affordable housing and impact fee waivers.
Again, Robin Singer, Planning Community Development Director. This is a discussion regarding land use restrictive agreements for affordable housing. Back in January, we came to you with, for some guidance in terms of the number of years that a land use restrictive agreement that didn't have to come before City Council, how long that would be good for, the determination of this fifteen years. Anything less than that would have to come back specifically to City Council. I'm putting an example up on the screen of, of kind of what we're talking about. The, the city code provides for, well, actually, it's the comprehensive plan, provides for additional density for affordable housing. So you may have a development such as this one that was built as duplexes. They have since decided that they want to subdivide these lots of record into separate fee simple lots in order to allow for the sale of the properties to individual owners. However, in doing so, it actually puts them over the density that they would be allowed for market rate. They'd have to, basically, if they want to sell them off separately like this, they need to establish a land use restrictive agreement in order to sell them separately as affordable housing. So whether they sell them or rent them, they would have to be retained as affordable units. And so we would put that in for fifteen years under the code. The second part of this discussion involves the forgiveness of impact fees for affordable housing. And so you have cases like this that don't necessarily come to City Council for a development agreement. They're not part of some larger projects, such as the one you just were discussing. So can we administratively waive the fees, impact fees specifically, for individual projects? So in the chart there, you see the fund that they would go to in terms of impact fees and the total amount, approximately $8,000 for one duplex. So would we, would the City Council be interested in waiving those fees? When we're talking about individual basis where we're just administratively approving a project that doesn't require City Council approval, could we waive the fees for that? So I'm going to back up here a little bit and, and talk about these things. So for the land use restrictive agreements, again, we agreed to the fifteen years and that, you know, the density is lower. Our recommendation on that is that for those lores that you review and approve, the templates for lores that were included in your package. Those were prepared by the city attorney's office, and he did indicate that he would like to see some agreement with City Council that those are sufficient in terms of applying these lores in cases where a project doesn't come before City Council. And then the second part is, of course, the waiver of fees. What we're recommending is that, we're talking about smaller projects of under fifty units that we can administer, as long as they're all covered with a land use restrictive agreement, that we could at a staff level waive those administrative fees. Now, it's my understanding that there were some waiver of impact fees way back in the day, but as I currently, as I read the current impact fee sections of the code, it doesn't authorize me to waive impact fees. So that's why we're here in front of you. I feel it's important to get City Council's authorization of that. Included in your package, the livable manatee incentive program. With that, just as an example of what the city want, may want to include in terms of an incentive program that includes waiving impact fees. However, if you look at that, it's not for an entire project that consists of affordable housing. It was really to include sort of inclusionary zoning. So you have market rate development and a certain percentage not to exceed would be affordable. And so for those individual affordable units that they waive the fees. And that's been in place, I think it was since two thousand and seventeen. So whether you want to do something broader like that or whether you just want to give us the authorization for under fifty units of lower moderate income on one project, that we could waive the impact fees for those.
So Mr. Sanders had a card up first, then Ms. Coker.
Thank you. I'm in favor of this, and I'm on a, again, another affordable housing committee through the council of governments with the Manatee County, George Cruz, and Shirley Bryant, Mayor of Palmetto, Charlie Kennedy with the school board, and myself for the city. And we've discussed this, and we're trying, we're wanting to make this uniform that, because the largest portion of, of impact fees comes through the school board. Now, they've got it under study. I don't know where that is right now, but, because I met with them a couple, three months ago. So I would be interested to work with them. This would really help if they would be on board with this, and they are considering it, and they're doing a study, you know how that goes. So it should be completed by now, but it would be very nice if we were all on the same page, that you can come in and do these things, and it's authorized by the city, the county, and the school board, that you get all your fees waived for affordable housing with these rules. And we establish the rules that we're all in uniform. So that would be my recommendation that let's, let's do some outreach talking to these people. Now, George might not talk to you now, because I understand you got a little scolding from some developers about affordable housing, so he may be a little shy. But I think it needs to be uniform with all the county governments so that anybody that wants to participate knows that this is a standard to increase affordable housing. And I think we can do that with just a few phone calls or a few meetings.
Ms. Coker and then Mr. Roth.
Yeah, with what you were holding up there, it looked like there were existing structures on there. So wouldn't they automatically be getting impact fee credits for, and that's always done.
That's actually the new development. I'm showing you the new development. The person who, the owner of that is in the room here today and is requesting a reimbursement and waiver of impact fees for those individual units. So, fast forward to that.
I'm not sure I'm following.
So these are new duplexes.
But there were old ones there.
No, not that I'm aware of. I don't know. Well, they, they get a credit for anything that's old anyway.
That's what, that's why I was questioning this.
Yes, yeah.
And that was always done administratively, right?
Right, I think, yeah, credits for, for units, that's just, it's, it's actually part of the impact fee analysis that's done for an individual project. They get credit for the old units. So, but this is, these are new units. I don't know that they had, I mean, there's also units on these three properties as well, duplexes on each of those individual as well. However, I think the land area for those three is sufficient that they didn't need to do a lura per se. However, I think, I believe they are being sold and rented essentially affordably. They just aren't necessarily needing to get a lura on those. So I think there's three things, I guess, we're asking for today is, is, one is some consensus that you're satisfied with the. that you're satisfied with the lores that were included in the package. The second is if you want to proceed with a program to waive impact fees, whether it be for, you know, and I'm talking about administrative waivers. And third is whether or not on this particular project, you're in agreement that we can waive the impact fees for those duplexes.
We'll go Mr. Roth, and then Mr. Perry.
Yeah, so, okay, for start, so, primary, primary responsibility for City Council is that we oversee the budget, and we oversee a lot of things, but really the budget. We, and I just have a, a hard time of, I mean, we just had a discussion a little while ago about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars of impact fees on a project, which we discussed and then decided to move forward. I, I don't know why the Council would give that, the right to go per property, per affordable housing project, you know, just the way we just did it. I, I'm just not sure why we, why we would do that. It seems like it's not that big of a deal. If someone needs to come in and ask for two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, I don't think, ask coming and standing before the, the Council and requesting it is, is...
Well, but I think when, when you look at this, Mr. Roth, we want to look at every eight thousand dollars.
Okay, so eight thousand, and I said I counted eight, so that's sixty-four K. You know, that's, that's starting to add up to real money. I, I don't, I just don't know that it's our, that we should...
And I think that's where she's asking. What level is it that, you know, we don't want to be looking at fifty-four dollars expenses?
Well, no, I, I, I don't think that at all, but I, I do, I do think that we...
Is there a level that you'd be comfortable with allowing them to not have to come to the City Council where we're not micromanaging? I'm not saying we are.
Yeah, I mean, we normally, we, so department heads, normally we don't have like a twenty-five thousand limit. Isn't that, isn't that where we are? That, so I just, I just would recommend the Council not give up authority over funds that they're responsible for supervising. It's just, I just...
I think Mr. Perry wanted to make something. Did you have something you wanted to tie into that, and then Ms. Coker?
Just, just briefly, I'm not fully sure I understand why we're doing this either. It's kind of with Counselor Roth's comments about, you know, impact fees are supposed to incentivize certain things, obviously. The waiver of impact fees, because we all understand that when there's new development, it's called an impact fee because it has an impact on those specific categories. This is a small project, for sure, that's our exemplar, our example here, eight units and the like. And I understand what Mary's saying, but maybe there is a sweet spot as far as smaller projects, and I understand that they also have lores, and that we do want to incentivize affordable housing. But do you really want to advocate your authority, basically, to make decisions on the value judgments of various proposals and whether it is worthwhile to forfeit those impact fees? Because you're going to have impacts with development for the benefit of another purpose. I'm not so sure, like, are we fixing a problem that doesn't exist, or...
Following up on that, so, so the two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, we just foregone. Well, someone has to cover that. I mean, the taxpayers are now going to cover that. We didn't, it didn't disappear. We didn't wave our magic wand and make the money go away.
Sixty-three years are old, and you can expect a lot of calls for service from emergency medical, Branton Fire Department out there, probably, more so than a different facility.
So I, I just, I, I just don't see why we're doing it.
Well, I, I just think, and I, and I had nothing to do with this coming forward. Sure, I'll get blamed for it from someone, but the, when you look at, and just thinking right outside the box quickly, I agree with what everybody's said so far, but when you look at it, if we're incentivizing them to do more on that property, isn't that what we want in neighborhoods, to clean them up? Yeah, so I mean, it might be something that, you know, like you said, is there a sweet spot that really can keep it going so it doesn't have to get clogged, clogged down in this, you know, and then become political? But again, I agree with Mr. Roth and Mr. Perry. I don't think that you want to give up something if it's a sweet spot.
I don't think we're giving anything up. I think it's our duty.
Right, but what I'm saying is, is, is there something that, that it takes it out where it is, can be administratively approved at what amount, if it's there? But I, obviously, we see so far it needs more discussion and more maybe information. We have Ms. Coker, and then Mr. Sanders. I saw first, Ms. Barnaby. Didn't you have something else?
Oh, I, I already...
Oh, you were down?
Yeah, I was just, yeah.
I thought you said it's a Mr. Sanders and a Ms. Barnaby.
Obviously, I agree with this, because I've been advocating it for, for a long time. Perhaps, I don't like to lose authority either, Mr. Roth, but I, I don't believe, I don't want to believe that we're over managing this for more affordable housing for the smaller homeowner or contractor. I think that we can have a lot more affordable housing if we allow this to happen without a bunch of bureaucracy. Now, if you wanted to limit it to anything under ten thousand, that would be fine. But again, what I just told you a few minutes ago, I'm advocating for this to be done in the city, the county, and the School Board. So we're all on the same page. So I say, let's go talk to them and get us all, that we promote this as a county, city, School Board function together that encourages affordable housing. We can always change it. I mean, to say that we vote on this or do this and, and we can't change it, if it, if there's hiccups along the way, I'd be the first one to tell you that, I said, look, this is not the way, what I thought it was. And so, you know, there's nothing wrong with apologizing when you make a mistake. That's, in fact, that's, that's good government. So I, I say that I would do this with the contention that if you want to cap it, fine, but work with those other two government entities to make this thing well-publicized, that this is what we're doing to help out our housing crisis, because we have a housing crisis.
Any other comments, Mr. Rudesell?
Yeah, I was just going to add, couple components here. The city's code already provides for density bonuses for affordable housing. And so part of what the Council's being asked to do today is to just approve these land use restriction agreement templates so that when a project like that comes forward, we don't have to bring all of them to you to, to sign off on the lores. So that's, that's one piece of it. The second part relates to the waiver of impact fees. It sounds like there may be more discussion, and frankly, I would recommend that if there was going to be some type of overall limit set, that that be done through our ordinances. I think that should come back. If that's something that the Council wants to do, I think the code ought to be amended to, to provide for that. And then the last component is, they're actually, this is a, a project that has been in the works for a long time. The applicant is here in the audience, if the Council wants to hear from her about the specific request related to this site.
And I would ask a question with what you just brought up, Ms. Rudesell and Ms. Singer. When something like this happens in government where we do make it the process a little easier, does that save the applicant even other, time is money, as we know?
Yeah.
And so would it actually speed up some of these projects? Because now they're not having to hire a lawyer, they're not having to come in if the process is there. That's what we want to do.
And the delay, delay on the project.
Because now they have to go through the whole process.
It does speed it up, and it also gives you some developer certainty.
Right.
Right.
You know, if you're trying to do your financials ahead of time and figure out what they're going to do.
Oh, Mrs. Barnaby's on the board, so Ms. Barnaby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm kind of conflicted, two minds with this. Part of me is, if, if we're going to be talking about forgiveness of impact fees, I think perhaps it might need to be, it's something that would have a bigger impact with affordable housing. So it'd be anywhere from twenty-five units to fifty units. I, you know, are we saying with this that we're just, if someone comes in and says, I'm, I'm going to do affordable housing, I have a lot, I'm going to put a house on it, are we going to say, okay, so you don't have to pay the impact fees?
No.
I'm, you know, I'm looking at this, and, and that's why I'm saying, I'm wondering what, if we do something, I would want it to get, I want to be able to get the bang for the buck as opposed to a house here, a house there. I don't, I don't see that as, as alleviating our crisis in an expeditious fashion.
Yeah, I'm also, I'm thinking of Habitat, for example, comes in and builds them on a regular basis. Would you want to incentivize those as well, or, or not? And, and really, we're just here to ask the question, and we did have this one project that is kind of generating that question, but we've had somewhat, you know, in-between projects where the question's been asked as part of the review process, and we don't necessarily have an answer for them. There's nothing in the code to say that they can do it under those circumstances. And if you don't want to do that, if you want things to come forward to you, maybe we can just formalize that process on how a project comes forward to ask for that waiver. I, I think that still would, would be good to have something in the code that specifically speaks to that. Because they've been telling me, well, they had a conversation with a prior director and, and got an answer, and so...
You have nothing in writing, you have nothing to back up.
Well, I think, I think one of the things to think about, though, and you, you brought up what I was going to bring up, is about Habitat, because even though Habitat is a little different than a private developer trying to do one-offs, you know, where they can do it, but if all of a sudden, these one-offs, and on this one, we're looking at two, four, six, eight, you know, we want to incentivize them to do eight, because even though it's only eight, it's eight more. And it does now maybe able to bring homeownership to a group that didn't have homeownership. And so, you know, and if it's affordable, you know, you know, we've got to do it one at a time. You can only save one child at a time. You can only do one family at a time. It's nice to do these eighty, hundred and twenty, three hundred all the time. And, but, but again, they have the wherewithal to come to us. Somebody like this, and I mean, again, I had no real thought about this before today, but I, you know, the Habitat model is a good example, and we do that because it's Habitat. But they have the, one after another. A developer that can put eight in might be something really to look at. And if we do drag it down the road where they have to go to this, they have to go to that, then they say, it's not worth it. You know, and I mean, if some of our, you know, I've said this all along, you know, yeah, when somebody does a project, they want to make a million dollars. But if they can do a project and do it affordable, only make two hundred thousand profit, when does it come to the... Everybody wants to make the million, but it comes to the point when sometimes you want to make a little. And we kind of are doing that on Where's Creek, even though they've been a lot more unaffordable than I thought from the neighborhood standpoint when we first did it, but still, we did that. We kind of incentivized with the cost of the lots for the guy to build them, to get houses there, which I think is great. But we thought they would be a little bit more affordable at the time, but the market...
We put it out the bit.
Right, right, but I'm saying, we, we sold the lots for a very inexpensive price, ultimately what we could have if they were one-offs. You know, but we want it because we wanted the housing to sit in a perfect market, so. I think I have Ms. Coker, and then Mr. Sanders.
Okay, I, I still am wondering, because I, I am, and I like the idea of making the process quicker and, and easier for the developer, and more so that they know what they're going to expect. But why, I, I don't even know, would you really consider that there's a big impact? Because I would assume that sewer's already there, water's already there.
Yeah, the impact fees are calculated based on formulas that are in the code that we had to codify. So it's, 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 we can consider per those calculations whether there was pre-existing development on that site and that they're not increasing the impacts, but it's, it's a set standard that we follow.
And is this going to be citywide, or is this in certain areas where that you're wanting to incentivize the, the redevelopment?
That would be up to City Council where you wanted to do it.
Okay, so I, I, I think my only reserve is just that we willingly give it away. I want to make it as easy and streamlined, so I don't know if we discuss, once we get to a certain amount, or, I don't know. I just am a little nervous of just carte blanche doing it.
Mr. Sanders, and then Mr. Roth.
Thank you. We were, we were at the Council of Governments months ago, and you were there, and I think Ms. Barnaby was there. I don't, I think Jane, you might have been there, and maybe even you. And we all agreed that we needed, that we need to do this. So I don't even know why we're questioning it now. The only thing I have a problem with is fifty units versus a dollar amount. I think anything under ten thousand dollars would be appropriate. Because here's what we're getting in return. We're getting rid of slow and blight, getting rid of, you know, empty lots that all over town that create more homelessness, create more garbage. There's garbage on some of these empty lots, and, and, and we're not maintaining that. It's because it's private property, so, and, but here's what we get back. They have to sell these at a certain price, and they have to retain that for fifteen years. If, if anything, we probably want to go maybe twenty, twenty-five, thirty. The, the project we just gave away, two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, has a fifty-year program. So there's no comparison there that, you know, but I'm saying that the staff, if we want to be on board with the county and the, which we have all agreed to at this Council of Governments, and I was assigned the position to represent the city, George Cruz for the county, and the Mayor of Palmetto, and Charlie Kennedy from the School Board. Well, they went to the School Board, and they are in the process. They may have already completed it. And, and then I don't know if they're going to do it on a dollar amount or a unit amount. I would suggest, my suggestion, but I'd go either way, is on a dollar amount that authorizes the, the Planning Department to anything up to, say, ten thousand. And that solves Mr. Roth's problem. We don't want to give up authority. We don't, because we don't know, housing prices are going up, and so if you start fifty units, that can be a lot of money. So, but to cap it at ten thousand and, and pilot the program, I don't see why we wouldn't try that.
But would that be a ten thousand per property up to a certain number of properties? Yeah, so that starts to stand up.
That's something to discuss, yeah.
But I think it's, you know, on this, you say, okay, it's ten thousand, so it, again, the one-offs might be too hard. You know, it's not worth it for a one-off, but when you've got eight, that's, is that eighty thousand then, or sixty-four thousand?
I say per applicant, you know.
Well, but I mean, then again, it, it goes right back to where really, one, one house isn't going to really probably come in and do it. So I, again, I think that this is maybe for more discussion, and then we re-engage with the, maybe that's the topic at the next Council of Governments, that really starts to, we know the school district already does it. There's ways to do it with the school district. We know we do it, and we know the county does it with, with giving up the impact fees. But we're trying to make it a little bit more universal, where it's easy.
So it's well-known, marketed, that we are doing our best to...
So, Mr. Roth, and then Ms. Coachman.
Oh, so I have no problem voting on this particular project here separately to get the books clean. But I, I do know that there's a lot of neighborhoods in this town where if you said, okay, city just allowing me to put a duplex next door to you, and you're going to help pay for it, because they're not going to pay an impact fee, so you're actually going to pay their impact fee, you're going to have some ticked-off neighbors calling. So, you know, I just don't, well, why, we're trying to figure out how to throw this into the ocean and see if it works out by itself. I, I don't have any problem talking about property, project, cost, assignment, whatever. This is what I do for a living. I, I took an oath of office to look after tax dollars. I think I did a pretty damn good job. We've got, what, how much, fifty million in the bank? Wasn't there when I started. So, I, I, you know, there, obviously, there's a lot of discussion going on. I, I don't think we're ready to vote on this.
I, I don't either. I think you need to vote on this one project, because you're combined, I think it's two separate issues. This one project that's coming before us needs to be voted on so they can move on.
So, Ms. Coachman.
Thank you. I, I agree, this particular project looks good. However, there may be someone that wants to just build one house and rent it out. Some of the areas where we have those homes that can be demolished and Habitat and organizations such as Habitat can come, come along and increase home ownership. Do we want to have blocks and blocks and blocks, or an entire ward with just rental property? We have got to start looking at how we can increase home ownership with, you know, various programs. But this particular project, I, I am in agreement, but there may be a person that wants to just build a duplex or one house and rent it out. I mean, I don't know why... I mean, I don't know why, but, and I think looking at that as waiving impact fees, it's just, so. I'd like more discussion, but this project looks good.
Yeah, I believe more discussion, I think we need to vote on this project. But those one-offs like that, I feel it need to be a homesteaded commitment, not an investor. Because investors will go around, buy up every lot in town, put duplexes on them and sell them, yeah. Now, it's not what I'm saying. I'm saying if I want to build a house on that property, and you cannot sell it. You cannot sell it for the fifteen years or whatever the lure is. You cannot sell it, but you have to homestead it, so that way, you know, investor's not gonna homestead it. So you have to remain in there for fifteen years if you want these waivers. If you don't, don't apply.
But that's basically what Habitat is, they do their own, so I'm saying like that we would want.
That's it, right.
Habitat, we would want, right, they become homeowners, they can't sell it for so long.
They can't sell it.
Or it's gotta go back.
Those rules have to be in there.
Right, no, that's, that's a big thing. And then also, thinking of it, managing it. If all of a sudden, we had hundreds of these, are we gonna be able to manage it as a city?
How do you homestead a duplex? Are you selling, are you condo-ing them or?
They're doing fee simple ownership on the individual units, so they are splitting.
Have like a shared wall agreement or something?
Yeah.
And that's something that Bradenton Village is talking about now with their new, the property that's there, of how they make those condominiumized in the new part of it, so there's homeownership. That's something we've gotta do, I think is very important for the future, is incentivize homeownership in all different ways. Because that brings more value to not only an individual, but to the properties and the upkeep and all that, so. Put it up in the area, yes ma'am, so. All right, I think we've kind of talked this quite a bit, so I don't know, is there something? What, today, the individual that's here, what would they talk to us about?
Well, why don't we start with, could we get a motion to approve the template of the land use restrictions agreement, agreements so that those can be used on the density bonus projects? We could start with that. That is an action item for today.
That has nothing to do with impact fees.
Does not have anything to do with impact fees.
It says it does.
No, it is for when a developer comes in and they want to get a density bonus, which is allowed already under the code if they do affordable housing. These agreements are what we would make them sign in order to, in order to do that.
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we accept, help me with this, Mr. Rudisell, the lure templates as presented to us.
And authorize the mayor to execute them on applicable projects.
That's my motion.
Second?
Uh, no.
Question, is there a second, hold on, is there a second?
Uh, I'll second it for purposes of discussion.
All right, now discussion, Mr. Sanders.
All right, I don't know what, you're considering this as a density bonus. What's the definition, your definition on this as a density bonus?
Right, that is already authorized under the code. The code says, if you do affordable housing, you get a density bonus from, I don't remember what the number is, it goes from ten units an acre to fifteen units an acre. That's all done administratively. No?
No, yeah, 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 you're right, but I'm just saying, I'm not in agreement with that.
It's in the conflict.
No, 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 yeah, okay, but, well, that's on, okay, it's bizarre in here, we don't even vote on it.
Correct, that is already in the code. But we need a way to restrict them to affordable housing when they come in with that type of project. And so all we're doing here is asking the council to bless the forms of the land use restriction agreements that we would use when they have these types of projects come forward.
But we're gonna study this, we're not gonna, this vote is not gonna be implemented. We wanna, I think we've got a lot more conversation in.
That's impact fees, though.
This has nothing to do with impact fees. No waiver of impact fees.
Okay, you changed gears.
It's on here, it does say.
It says, explanation continued on page two. It actually, this is where I get confused. Page one, I don't have a problem with, page two, now I'm getting into.
I think we've combined too many.
One duplex, including road sewer, is approximately eight thousand, the city cannot waive school. Eight thousand, is that, is that for the duplex, two units, or is that duplex, one unit?
That's, that was just the example given, that's the example on the screen.
That's just an example.
Of a duplex that was subdivided and therefore now is over density, so they need a lure. They're asking for forgiveness, impact fees, separate issue. So we are using the lures for that project, but it has nothing to do with the impact fees. We are not waiving the fees as part.
I think we've got a lot more discussion to have on that, can we, you know, that's my opinion. This project would like to have waiver of impact fees on existing units.
And that's not what's on the table right now.
Well, I thought you.
That's not part of this motion.
Not part of this motion.
Oh, okay, we.
We're not done yet, we're not done, that's coming up after this.
The lure does not, this page doesn't.
Yeah, and I apologize, the front page should have had a separate recommendation on the lure.
I would motion, I would motion to table this for this, but I have a motion to table.
Table dies because of lack of a second?
This is a continuation of what we started in January, right?
In essence, it is, yeah, because you agreed to fifteen years when we have these administratively approved density increases under the comprehensive plan, and so we have to give them a lure. So the city attorney is asking you to approve the form of that lure that restricts them for fifteen years to affordable.
And doesn't even address impact fees on here?
Correct, has nothing to do with impact fees.
I'm okay with that, but I think we need work on.
There's too much, you're too much in this one request, this is confusing.
And I'll tell you, it started with this individual coming forward to us and wanting a waiver of their impact fees. And we said, well, I need to take that to city council, because I don't have the administrative authority to do that. So as part of that, we had already done the lures for them, which we could do, but the city attorney says, as long as we're taking that forward, let's go ahead and approve the form of the lures so that you know what it is they're being restricted to, so.
I'm not, I'm not in favor of that.
That's how it got here.
So we have it, we've had discussion to, the motion by Ms. Barnaby, second by Ms. Coker, to do what Mr. Rudisell has addressed. So we'll start the vote in Ward one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
No.
Five?
Yes.
Carrie's four to one. All right, and then now the impact fee information for the specific case.
So the bigger issue of administratively approving waivers, the impact fees, we'll bring that back for another discussion. And perhaps there's another group working on that. For this individual project, we're talking about the duplexes here, and the applicant is here, and they are requesting a waiver of the impact fees for each individual duplex, which is approximately eight thousand dollars.
Per duplex.
For each duplex.
Each unit.
How many duplexes is it?
There are four duplexes depicted, how many are you covering with the lures?
There's seven duplexes.
Okay, why don't you come up, come up and we can ask some questions.
Ms. Svenson, who's the owner of some of the units.
Okay, so please.
Mr. Mayor, has she been sworn in?
That's what I was gonna ask. What we'll do is, if you'll, were you sworn when you came in?
No.
Okay, so, does she need to be sworn? No, you don't have to be, so please state your name and address for the record.
Linda Svenson, my address is fourteen oh nine First Avenue East, Bradenton.
And I think there's probably a little confusion of some of the stuff we're talking about, but we're trying to clarify that and understand it. So what I think this council I've heard so far is, we kind of need to know how many and how much.
Okay, originally, it was vacant land.
Right, okay.
It was, so there was no buildings there before, it was.
Timing, what do you think years-wise?
Three years, we've been doing this.
So three years ago, what we're looking at, you've got two red lines on the screen, those four units were not there, three years ago.
No, nothing was there, no, it was vacant land, all seven buildings have been built.
Oh, so now there's.
At this point. They're waiting for COs, which they cannot get until impact fees are paid.
So where is the seven buildings?
On these, can you see me if I pointed this? Each of those little squares is a duplex.
There's a duplex here now, a duplex here, and a duplex here.
So there's the four that we see plus three more.
Can you orient me on the streets, what streets we're at? Eighth Avenue and Eleventh Street.
East or west?
East.
Aren't there fourteen units there?
These, these two, this is, this one and this one, okay. So there's a duplex here and a duplex here that would exceed density based on a subdivision of the property. So she's agreed to a lure to restrict those to affordable housing. She's just asking for the forgiveness of impact fees. The money that you see cataloged on there is for one duplex. So it would be eight thousand dollars twice, that would be waived.
Fifty-six thousand dollars.
Point of order here, point of order, you are only buying one duplex that has, would be sixteen thousand dollars in impact fees, is that correct?
Yeah, I built two duplexes, four units.
Four units, so four units.
Four units.
But there is much more units there than that, there's fourteen, I believe, altogether.
Well, yeah, there's fourteen.
Fourteen.
Seven times two, right, and it's not eight times, eight hundred thousand times two, it's just one.
The other developer's gonna come back too.
Well, we were trying to get the whole project approved, so they didn't have to come back when they did their.
Right, that's what I think we should do, is do the whole thing, it's all, they're all together.
Each of the seven units separately, we were hoping to get all seven approved for the impact fee waivers.
Right.
And then just be done with it.
Well, not all of those are duplexes.
They're all duplexes.
I was just in one, was not a duplex.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're two units in each building.
Yeah, and I think.
I walked from front to back and I didn't see none of it.
But what you're asking now is if all seven went, some are waiting to get their COs, because you haven't paid it yet, some you've already paid, so you actually want us to refund money.
Correct.
Give you the, whatever's not due now, you want to waive, and whatever you've already paid, you want back.
Correct, that's what I would like to do. When we started the project three years ago, we were told we could get impact fee waivers. Now, we kind of built with that in mind, but, you know, staff has changed, ideas have changed, and everything else. So here we are today, wondering, you know, what happened and.
Impact fees if you made it affordable housing.
That's correct, and by the land use restriction, we have no option.
Mr. Rudisell, you have any further comments? I mean, it's not something I think any of us have dealt with similar to this.
This is discretionary on the part, I mean, it's authorized by statute, the board, the city is authorized to waive impact fees on affordable housing projects. So there's nothing in the code that provides for it, but it is discretionary on the part of the, on the part of the city council at this point.
All right, so we're gonna go to Mr. Perry and then Mrs. Barnaby.
I was trying to get a feel for the project itself, and are these resale units? When you say affordable housing, I hear that bantered around a little bit, but I personally don't know what that means as it relates to these particular projects. Are they duplexes that will be rented, duplexes that are condominiumized that will be sold? What are the terms of the AMI as it relates to the term affordable, is it sixty, thirty percent? Because we are trying to incentivize it and everything, but I think they need to know a little bit about that.
Okay, well, the, two of the units are being sold right now, and four of them are being rented.
When you say sold.
I mean, sold to individuals.
Two units in one building, so you're selling part of the, because we have, we have, I think most of us up here have a image of duplexes from the eighties and nineties, that if you drive in some areas, look terrible. But you're trying to home, you're trying to homeowner incentivize by selling a duplex to an individual. And then so, there's gonna be two individuals that own one duplex.
Yeah, just like, just like any other multifamily unit.
And they won't be able to rent it if we do this.
But they aren't, how are they considered affordable? I mean, are you selling them below market?
That's a question.
Because the county establishes the numbers for the income and the cost, and we have to follow a formula that's between eighty and a hundred percent of the mean income, and then it has to be thirty percent of that for rents, and it has to be a percentage of what the median house price is to be able to sell it. So based on the county-established formulas, it has to fall in those guidelines, and that's stated in there.
So you can only sell it to sellers that would qualify on their income to purchase it? It doesn't have to do with the market price of the other residents?
And how long does that have to stay?
Fifteen years.
So they would, so there is the restrictions, that person has to live there fifteen years, they can't rent it?
They can, they can move, or they can rent it, but not without resigning another lure to keep them obligated from the fifteen years from the time we first signed ours. The lure extends for the fifteen years, no matter how many owners it goes through.
They can sell it, but they have to sell it to somebody that meets the criteria.
That keeps the lure in place.
And the lure is based on income of thirty percent of HUD, okay.
Yeah.
Can I ask this one further question? So if you have a product that costs a certain amount at market rate to build, and it costs the same amount to build even though it's being sold to someone that qualifies under a reduced AMI, how does that work for you? I mean, wouldn't you want to sell it for its maximum price?
Well, the, yes, absolutely, we would have loved to have been able to do that. But since the property was only one point two five acres, and we wanted to build fourteen units instead of twelve units, we had to follow the land use restriction, so we had no options.
Hence the density bonus allowing you to split them into two is your incentive, basically, to kind of make your cost, your cost was, you paid for one under traditional, you can only sell one unit, now you can sell two units, but you gotta sell it at a reduced price.
Correct.
Got it?
Correct, so if we could have not done that, that would have been wonderful. But, but once it's, once the plan started, and that's the direction it went, then everything was agreed to. Yes, it'll be affordable housing, yes, we'll do a lure, and I was, we were kind of believing it was the same as the county's formulas, and apparently, it wasn't completely.
There was some confusion. I think is, we have just done seven units, we sold the property, they did those seven tiny homes, or whatever you want to call them, over there. But when they sold those, they were sold at a lot more than we thought they were gonna be when we kind of approved it.
A lot less than what they were.
So, so are those, is this a similar thing we did with that, but they came in, or, because we own the property? So I don't, it's not, that's what we're trying to figure out.
I don't know, you own property right across the street from this too, that I think you're gonna do a retention pond on, but.
Jim's fault.
Yeah. But anyway, we're kind of stuck waiting for some approval, so we can, you know, sell the other units or move renters into units and stuff.
So the people that are buying.
Mr. Roth, Ms. Barnaby, I'm sorry, we forgot her, so.
Just confused.
Well, I just want to make sure I, I understand exactly how much, how many. So there are fourteen.
Units.
Units.
But only seven duplexes.
Okay, but fourteen units and the, the almost eight thousand dollars is for each unit?
No.
Or each building?
Right, or you can think of it as four thousand per unit, or eight thousand. Because when you do a duplex, you have to pull one permit for both sides.
Understood.
So it's, the impact fees are done per permit.
And those are only, that's only gonna be done for the duplexes that are covered with a lure.
Right.
Only some of them, I believe, were not over density, so they didn't need a lure, so they, we don't, they don't get back their impact.
So, again, I just am trying to get to the final figure. How many units would receive, should the council choose to do this, a waiver of impact fees?
Twelve units total, or six buildings at eight thousand per.
So six buildings at eight thousand dollars, so you're talking about forty-eight thousand dollars, round figures. Okay, I, again, you know, we're talking about duplex and, you know, one, again, the idea with one permit being pulled that would have two separate units on it, I get it, that makes sense to me.
It's basically four thousand dollars a homeowner.
Correct.
Right, Mr. Roth.
So, and this is confusing, and it's after the, it's in arrears, which makes it even more confusing.
Well, only because we thought it was there all along until we got ready to get our COs and found out it wasn't.
I had a planning director years ago that left me with a whole bunch of those messes, so. So, now, the, under the lure, the people buying it have to, have to fit in, in income.
That's correct.
But you can sell it for whatever value you want?
No, the county has a formula.
Okay, so there's, there's.
It's a HUD formula.
Okay, that's, that's all I need to know.
Okay.
So, so the buyer is qualified and it has to fit within a HUD, okay, that's, that's good enough for me.
Based on their income, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Look under the lure, it describes eligible purchaser.
Okay.
And so there's a defined terminology in there that describes that.
Okay.
Question. There is one unit there, I was in it, that was not a duplex, it's a four-bedroom unit. I went in the front door, and went out the back door, and looked at the duplex that you're buying.
Well, the ones I built.
Or built, what I meant to say. And your duplexes are ones in front, ones in the rear. And your duplexes are ones in front, ones in the rear, they're identical, but it looks like a single-family house. That was the selling point, is it does not look like a duplex, because you come in from one side of it on one side, and the other side from a different street is like, it looks like two single houses, but they're just basically taken off and put together. The house I was in was four-bedroom, and it was like, I walked out and it was probably a hundred feet from the one you're talking about duplex. Is that part of this too?
Yes.
Okay, so now there was this.
Yeah, when you walked in the front door, I can't, I keep wanting to point at this like it's on a screen. When you walked in the front door, the units are side by side like this, so you could walk in the front door and out the back door, but it's attached to the unit next to it.
Okay, so that one then had two doors facing the street.
Mine are attached this way.
Yes.
The other ones are attached this way.
So, I didn't go in the other one, that, that was, looks more like a duplex from the street.
Correct.
You're, the one that is out back is on two different streets, it doesn't look like a duplex.
The one that faces on eleven.
I got it.
Has the other units totally in the back too.
I'm sorry, it was, I didn't realize there was one attached.
Yeah, they are, they are.
All right, so that is a total of fourteen units.
Correct, and two of the fourteen are of a sufficient size that they do not need Alora. So, we're only talking about twelve.
Twelve at eight grand is ninety-seven thousand.
No, no.
Forty-seven.
Four grand.
Four grand each.
Four grand each.
Forty-eight thousand.
Six, six bills, six bills just times eight.
Eight, correct. That's what's.
Sorry.
All right.
I'm really not trying to make it confusing.
This is why we wanna have a policy.
And I would like a question, well.
So, do I have to do this? But then again, this, this is a fifty thousand dollar deal versus what I suggested, a ten thousand, so.
But it's, it's twelve parts.
Per duplex, then it still would have been, ten thousand per permit, we still would have been under that minimum.
Per permit.
But we did do a lure for both for sale and for rent on the unit. So, whether they ever rent, or they ever sell, in the fifteen years, they're covered under all of these restrictions.
Right.
Mr. Perry.
Just briefly, so, when did you start these projects?
Um, twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, okay. And did you originally propose, uh, single-family dwellings?
My brother started it, and he did, and the discussion was that you wanted more units, so it then evolved into duplexes.
So, if I had a project and I penciled it out as a single-family unit, and then I figured out a way to basically make it two marketable units, whether I'm renting them, or I'm selling them on the same parcel, I'm kind of happy, because now I got two things to sell on the same parcel. So, you have been incentivized by the bonus provisions, basically.
There were two, there were.
Like, like, really well, it would seem like, yeah.
It was actually, it was, if we hadn't gotten any incentive, based on the one point two five acres we had, at ten units to the acre, technically, we could have built twelve and a half units. Instead, we built fourteen. So, we were incentivized, one and a half, or if you wanna say two units, two units. So, that was the bonus.
Was it zone multifamily?
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
I mean, the original plot was done like in the twenties, it was tiny little baby little lots, and then they were all recombined.
So, your incentive was, you were able to go from twelve to fourteen, basically?
Correct, correct. And then based on that, and they could only go to that many by doing the duplexes as to the single family.
Yeah.
In hindsight, maybe it would have been better to stay with the single family, but, yeah, we would have been done two years ago instead of doing this now, 'cause it took a long time to do the duplexes. But, now they're ready, and we have people that want to buy them and rent them and move into them, and so that brings us here.
Mrs. Coker.
Yeah, um, do we, do we know, is there any kind of documentation or any backup to the, to the, this was promised to her to begin with?
Just lots of emails.
Well, I mean, if there, if it was promised to her, I, I really have a problem going back on if it was promised to her, first off. But, um, second off, I mean, while I know we all wanna encourage affordable housing, we, we also wanna encourage quality. And, and so, I, I don't know that if I just approved allowing this to just be done anywhere, and to, I mean, take any single-family lot and make it a duplex if it's affordable housing, I just, did we just approve that?
No.
Okay.
Well, and this wasn't one single-family lot, remember, it was, it was a lot of lo, land, and it was subdivided.
So, the yellow lines aren't the lots?
Yeah, those are parcels within the whole piece that was there.
It was replanted.
Correct.
Okay, well, I just wanna make sure that I, I'm.
Well, if, if that's the case, though, where it was kind of told by the planning director at the time, you know, I mean, it's not, it wouldn't be good to go back on.
I don't like going back on stuff when you've been promised.
Was she a martyr girl at the time?
It's not surprising, but would you doubt that that happened, Mr. Roth?
No, not at all.
Me neither, so, from my knowledge, so.
We had some pretty wild.
So, the chair will entertain a motion. Chair will entertain a motion to.
I have a motion, I'll make the motion.
Okay. To approve.
To approve these units for the, uh, affordable housing as, as spoke of, and waive the impact fees.
For a second?
Second.
Well, that, is that under refund, I mean, is, is that, okay, okay.
I just, I just wanna make sure that what we've.
If, if there are impact fees that have already been paid, that those would be reimbursed, is that part of your motion?
Yes.
Yes, I think that should be.
Just wanted to make sure.
Right.
Okay.
I didn't think, I thought she said they weren't paid, that's why they couldn't get a CO.
Some aren't.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Complicated.
Mayor, just, I think Mr. Williams actually has some experience with this as it relates to water connection and the like. I don't know if it's worthwhile, but, okay. Yeah, we, we talked yesterday, hotly enough, just by coincidence, in, late in the day, about some of these fees being paid, some of them not being paid, and things of the like, I always, go ahead.
I think it may be if there's question on if things were promised or not promised, maybe to table it, redo some research and see what was promised and what not, if there's plenty of emails, then maybe we can get a little more definitive answers on what exactly it is that was promised, and kind of go from there. That's just my opinion, but I know this has been an ongoing situation, an ongoing project, and we started.
Months, months, months.
You know, several years ago, one way, and then kind of went the other way, and we, we held up on, and, you know, with access to water meters and so forth to try to get some of these fees paid, because we had, we had folks coming in with supposedly purchases of these buildings, and there were no inspections, COs done, nothing, so, it was kind of like the cart before the horse.
So, I mean, I, I agree with that standpoint, but I also agree that I think the council has said, if I'm not mistaken, that we're willing to even do some of this, even if that, that wasn't, you know, there's not documentation, I don't know. I mean, I, I think it's something we've really gotta look at, trying to figure out, not to just give away the money, but to come up with ways to make people wanna do eight properties, because you can only add up one affordable housing at a time. So, I don't know, I mean, it's, it's confusing, it is very confusing. But we have a motion on the table to approve it, so, in a second.
Okay.
All right.
Any further discussion?
Well, I, I guess, I, I'll be, I'll be supporting this, but I, I'd say that this is no way to do business.
I agree.
In the future.
I agree, I agree.
Right. All right, so we've discussed it, we're gonna start the vote in Ward Two.
Yes.
Three.
Yes.
Four.
Yes.
Five.
Yes.
One.
Yes.
Carrie's five to zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, we do have counsel.
All right.
Could I have a question on what we just voted on before?
She doesn't.
Huh? She wasn't present? No, no, seriously.
Oh, that's serious?
Before.
Yeah, 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 no, not, not this, not thi, well, that's, that's the question I have. Haven't we, have we properly public noticed what we just changed in this one? I, I think we've, we possibly have not allowed the public, public notice for what we just changed. And not this vote, the previous vote, I mean, it's confusing, if it's confusing to us voting on it, it certainly has to be, because what this says is discussion. It doesn't say anything, number one, says discussion of land use restrictive agreements for affordable housing and impact fee waivers. Now, we just did something different than that, just not this, the vote before. That's not what we, that's not, I don't think we properly noticed it.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just, I think, and that's, it's a good point you have, but I think what Mr. Rudicell kind of expressed was that the, it is in the comp plan, the Alora concept itself, and that this was just approval of the forms. And so, it's kind of a pro-form of motion, just to approve the forms, basically, as it relates to the, to the laws. And we previously voted on it in January. Right, that was my understanding.
We, we agreed to, in January, the fifteen years, but we, that, I, I think we're voting on more than just the forms.
I mean, I think that.
If that's, if we're just voting on the forms, I want it to be part of the record that that's all this is, 'cause it's, it's, you know, but.
What it is.
That's all, okay.
That's all it is, all right.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that's understood, thank you.
Moving forward, Mr. Perry, any unfinished business?
No, sir.
All right, we'll go to council reports, Mr. Sanders.
Nancy, report.
Uh, Ms. Coachman.
Thank you, I have made some notes to comment about some citizen comments that were made earlier, but the citizen left. But I, I'm sure he'll, he'll know, he'll, he'll get word. Many of you heard that, I'm being accused of not thinking about the black community. And of course, we all represent the entire city. We are, our city is divided into five wards, it's kind of just so to establish a go-to person, the way I look at it, because you don't want somebody who's liked more than others to get all the calls, so. Um, but, but what I wanted to say was, I, as a black woman that raised, with my ex, we raised two successful black males, and I am quite aware of the, the thoughts and the, the sensitive issues about problems between law enforcement and black males in specific. Fortunately for me and my sons, they've not encountered anything out of the norm. But I do not condone any kind of misuse of authority. And I wasn't around, it's in this seat at, in twenty nineteen, when these things occurred. Um, and my goodness, if you say it over and over and over and over again, what is there left to be said? I wholeheartedly believe in our law enforcement. Yes, sometimes there are errors, sometimes things aren't quite done the way they could have been, maybe. But in this case, I don't know, and, and if something like that happened in my eyes, with, you know, my own eyes, of course, I would not be saying, oh, yippee, yah, yah, look what you did to them, I would not, I would not agree with it. So, it's sad that he, he needed me to just say that, I guess, but then there, there it said. My other comments I wanted to talk about were things that are just happening in my area, complaints that citizens are constantly, and rightfully so, giving me, and it's, things about the homeless, things that we know we need to address, things about crime, things that we know we should address. But I wanted to also talk a little bit about, we, we talk about affordable housing, but what happens to also rehabbing houses that, you know, like, and in the eighties or so, there were grant money, there was grant money to help some of the elderly rehab their homes, fix the roofs and what have you. I mean, I think we should also be looking at those blighted areas, and I know this isn't a CRA meeting, but it's a city concern. Um, we need to look at those blighted areas and see if there are other ways to lift up the quality of life other than building four-story, ninety-unit affordable apartments. I mean, not to say that that's not done, but the, the area that surrounds those buildings should also be nice as well. Um, homeownership is definitely something that I, I push a lot in cleaning up the area, and that's it. I wish I could do it all like that.
Sanders had a question.
Just one comment on that, we do, we've got about four hundred thousand CDBG money, that's, that's what we do with it. I ask, you may not remember when you first came in here, for another half a million to be put on top of that, to do more of that rehab, so forth. I also ask for abatement program with relief of adblocker tax, I'm not gonna stop bringing that up, just, you know.
And I made the comment so that we can really at least start considering that and.
Five hundred more thousand added to that four hundred thousand, and I'd put more than that, but I thought that was being generous, but it got voted down, so. You're, you're, you're a hundred percent on it.
Well, you know how slow government can be, but we are definitely gonna push ahead, I'm sure, and it's conversation I've had, you know.
Thank you, Ms. Coachman, thank you, Ms. Coker.
Okay. Um, I, I actually wanna build a little bit on Ms. Coachman's comments, and actually, when we were broke, when we broke for a little break, I, I spoke to Mr. Rudicell, and I, I know we've talked about this many a times, about having a workshop on code of conduct, but we, we should not have to sit here and listen to personal attacks like that. Um, I was absolutely offended by some of the names he was calling Ms. Coachman.
I got subscured.
And I, well, I just don't think that we should be allowing it to happen, it just encourages it, and anybody watching it, and people are pushing us to put this live on TV, I, I, I don't want that out there. And there've been some things that have been coming through on emails, personal attacks about people's physical looks. I, I just, I just don't think that, I think that the city of Bradenton, that they deserve better than that. And so, I, I really want us to do that workshop and come up, because in talking to Scott, we do not have to allow that. And, and those outbursts are, are just downright offensive, and not, not what we should be accepting. Um, now, beyond that, I, in the terms of kochi being good type thing, first off, I just need to give a shout out, and I hope I get, I don't have his last name, but his name was Daxter with Public Works, and it was Labor Day, and he was over there helping unload, I mean, they went ahead and unloaded our recycling over there at GT Bray, and he was so nice, and he was helping me, because you gotta push it aside and all that, so I just wanna give him a shout out. Um, and then also, I don't know if anybody caught this article in the Tampa Bay Times, but I, our, in our community here, we have Westminster, and they have really, and I actually spoke to them, right as this was going on, when they were pulling out of Afghanistan, and you had all the refugees coming over here. And they have had a program in place, and they've employed over forty Afghan refugees. They have helped with finding housing for over a hundred, and I think that they've got a solution that, that, that might need to be replicated. And so, I just wanna give the, I know the person over there, Mary Klein at Westminster, has kind of been spearheading this, but I, I just, I just wanted to kind of call it to the attention, 'cause I don't know if it made local news, but Westminster is right here downtown, and I, I just wanted to give them a shout out and say thanks for being part of the solution.
That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Barnaby.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would like to thank our fire department, because Ward Two last week had back-to-back fires. One of those fires, there was a fatality, but I think most people understand that you really can't be on oxygen and smoke in bed. And I don't mean that, I, I certainly don't mean to be flippant. I think sometimes people forget, they're just so used to doing things at times. My mother was on oxygen the last ten years of her life, and there was a couple of times that I had to go, that's, you know, sorry. No, we're not lighting my kid's birthday candles in front of you, sort of thing. Um, so, to, to our residents at Pine Brook, again, I would like to extend my sympathy to the mother who lost her adult child. And also, the fact that we had an experienced professional crew that went to back-to-back fires in this heat. And that speaks volumes, and when I, when I was speaking with the battalion chief, he told me. And when I, when I was speaking with the battalion chief, he told me, Ms. Barnaby, we've trained for this, we got this. So I appreciate that very much. I also want to send just some caring thoughts to Stephen Maureen Dai, who, while not city residents, Mr. Dai does have a business down here, their house burned down. And one of our units did respond over there as well, because it was, it was a large house, it was a dangerous situation. So I would just like, again, to thank our fire department for everything they, they do to keep all of us safe. I want to thank the committee that put together the September eleventh Remembrance Event that we had on Sunday morning. I thought it was a very, it was a wonderful event. I was absolutely gobsmacked and pretty much without words to be a recipient of one of the Richie Evers Awards. So thank you for that. And I also, I noticed that after the event, we had one of our city employees going around and making sure that the park was cleaned up and set up and taking care of, of what needed to be done. So I would like to thank Mr. Ross Peterson at Public Works for always being there when we need them, and additionally, for your assistance in Ward Two with Lewis Park and the medians over near Pine Brook. Appreciate your professionalism and the way that, that you attend to your duties with our citizens. You're always very respectful, you're always very courteous. It's, it's wonderful to have someone like you work with us. So thank you, and thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Ross.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a situation I want to explain to the council, because I think there may be an action necessary at some point. So there's a commercial, a commercial enterprise, I've been dealing with both Jim at Public Works and, and Volker at Code Enforcement, and they've both been trying to help, but we've got kind of a quagmire. So there's a commercial property that has a small dumpster. It's assisted living type facility, medical. Anyway, they, at one point, they decided to save money by trying to go to once-a-week pickup, which just had trash all over the alley. And just, and then, and then, not, no fault of our guys. And anyway, to explain to them, they need to go ahead and get, you know, twice a week pickup. Well, it turns out, that, that's not even enough, because they're, these things are always overflowing. It's smaller, it's a smaller commercial container. So the cure is, they just need a larger, a larger unit, because right now, I mean, it, it's, it's a health issue. And Volker said that this is not, this is not alone, this is, there's other properties like this that this is happening in. And the problem is that the facility is trying to pinch pennies and does not want to buy a larger container, so that their trash doesn't go up and down the alley. I don't know why they have a say in that. So I think that if, 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 if Public Works doesn't have the authority, I think we need to give it to them, that if someone, we, we, we get the right, we have the right to tell you how big your commercial container is. Because it's, it's not fair to the residents that this is, this is going on. It's not fair to our guys, it's not fair to, I mean, so far, a code, between Public Works and Code, there's probably been twenty visits to this property. And it's just because they're being cheap. So I don't know that anything needs to be done today, but you're all aware of it. I think an action does need to be done. I don't know what, what the cure is. Do you, do you need us to vote on something, or? I, I didn't, I didn't tell you I was throwing this out here today, but I just had to get a word to get.
That's okay. I, I think one of the complicating factors here is that the type of container that's there is a rollout container. It is not something that we supply, it is something they purchase. So to go to a four-yard unit is telling them, you've got to buy a bigger container. I have no problem if you give us the authority to make people do that, but it's, it's not a container that we provide. That's, that's the only complicating factor to, to point out to you all in this case.
Ms. Barnaby?
Well, question I have, because of the way that you described it, when you said assisted living, but medical, medical waste should not be entering into our regular garbage situation. Medical wastes are supposed to be separate.
And this, the few times that I've been over there in the past month or so, it's, I, I don't necessarily see the medical waste other than gloves.
Right.
I see that it is just whatever, food, everything, just not even close to being in the container, just all around it.
Well, again, that's, if, if our employees are having to get out of the vehicle and go and pick up some of these things, that's a concern.
Mm-hmm.
Again, medical wastes are supposed to be in a separate situ, I mean, it's supposed, because I remember years ago, there was one time I was behind a truck, and they stopped and they picked up what was at the curb, and they picked up a red medical waste bag, and I was like blowing my horn and like, no, do not introduce, because that goes to the landfill. Medical waste is supposed to be handled differently.
Correct.
And they, they are supposed to have, many of them have a separate service to come and pick up the thick red bags that have medical debris, for lack of a better term.
And I know our staff has been over and talked to the site manager, whoever, who ultimately isn't the person who has the say-so on their authority. The person that we've spoken to has wholeheartedly agreed, yes, we need to do this, but hasn't been able to apparently get approval from her ownership.
Well, so...
I'll talk, I'll talk with Volker. This doesn't make too much sense, that Code Enforcement can't go out there and start citing people for lack of upkeep against the landowner.
That's just, that's, the problem is going to be continuously, we need to be able to force them to go to, what is it, four?
Four TV containers.
So we have to, so we, we need to be able to force them to say, this container is not working. We, we've given you a year of it. Literally, we're just trashing a neighborhood because you won't buy a four-yard container, so we'll buy one for you, and we'll stick it in there, and we'll come pick it up. I mean, it's, it's literally, and, and Volker said he's got the same thing with, this is not, this is not unique.
Right.
There's, there's apartment complexes where the exact same thing is going on, and trash is just going everywhere.
It seems to me that you cite them under the literal ordinances and property cleanliness, and that at that point, you bring them down to the special magistrate, and you said the fines are accruing. And then you show them the affidavits and photographs that it's been happening for quite some time, and the special magistrate hasn't been particularly sympathetic to those things, in my experiences. So I don't know if we're, we're approaching it from the right enforcement perspective, is what I'm saying.
The cure is, well, we, we've been doing this, and I, I feel bad for Jim, I feel bad for Volker, because we just keep running around, and, and, and so you got a manager on site that says, I don't, I don't disagree with you, but his boss won't allow him, so why, why are we, why are we letting these people tell us how to run our city? You're creating trash, it doesn't fit in this container, here's the new container, and...
We've had great success sending that letter. It says basically, there's notice of hearing on these citations, they accrue at a hundred and fifty dollars a day. When you send them the notice that says that they're up to seventy-five thousand, and then they get the notice that you're foreclosing on their property, which you've started to do fairly effectively, for some reason, it's started to clean things up around here, if you haven't noticed. I mean, I have.
I know.
Yeah. And, and not in this particular situation, but from last year, some of the perennial problems we had with some of the rental apartments and things like that.
This predates our...
Does it?
This has nothing to do with the, this, this has been going on for a long, long time, and it's not, it's not getting better. And, and the, the cure is just making them either, so we need a big...
Let Rob have the opportunity to make sure and get with Volker and do that one time.
Just to interject, we, at the department, we pay big money for bio-waste, and bio-waste is bio-waste. So you got a health issue, a hazmat issue, and so we pay top dollar.
And that's still...
If it's a, if it's a healthcare facility, Department of Health can get involved.
But they may not be, we don't know that they're putting bio-waste in.
Right, right.
Correct.
I know the same thing at the funeral home.
Sure. And, and so anyways, there's, there's different routes that Code Enforcement could look at.
Forget, forget I said bio-waste. It's trying to stick a gallon in this plastic bottle. It's not going to ever work. It's just not going to fit. It's going to go all over the place.
Excessive medical gloves, and I'll say, you know, bodily...
Fluids. Diapers.
Fluids. Our folks shouldn't be dealing with...
But gloves can be put in there if there's no soiling to them, no blood on them and that sort of thing.
I'll get the address, and I'll, and I'll also talk...
Let's not put that to it, because that may not be the case right now, and that hasn't shown, so. Anything else, Mr. Ross?
That's it, thanks.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I just want to thank, obviously, our, the, all of the fire officials in not only our city, but also the county that are involved in the nine eleven memorial. And, and if you didn't know Richie Evers, that, and I got to know him a little bit before he passed last year, but, but if you didn't know him, he was a retired firefighter from New York City. I think he was Station Three, so I guess one was right downtown, but Station Three, if I'm not mistaken. And he had just retired, came, moved down here, and then nine eleven happened. He went back up and spent a lot of time up there at Ground Zero. So it, you know, it was an honor to get to know him, and, and he died from the cancers that have come out of Ground Zero, that there, that firefighters and police officers and people that were there. So, you know, it was an honor to be one of those recipients, as Ms. Barnaby was, for the Richie Evers thing, that, and again, I put it as all of us up here got that award from the city, from past people that have done things for that. But this was actually the twentieth anniversary of our memorial, but the twenty-first anniversary of nine eleven. And obviously, that makes sense, because you wouldn't have had that first year, because that's when it happened. But when you look, you know, in the city, we're proud in the city to have that memorial at Rossi Park. And I know we're doing some things with Rossi Park, the memorial committee wants to do something, and, and kind of memorialize that park even a little bit more around the, the memorial that we have there for all of our firefighters, police officers, EMS, and, and really symbolize that even more, because, you know, when, when, when people do give their lives in that situation, and we saw, I mean, in about twelve, fourteen hours, we had three incidents that our fire department went to, two in the city, one major that we assisted with. Because when, you know, we talk about all the different departments, there is no city lines when it comes to saving the, the public or doing things, and, and, you know, all of our fire police go where they need to go, when they need to go, and they're the ones rushing in, as we saw in nine eleven. Everybody's running out, and they're running in. So just to, to tribute to everybody there and all of the people, it was very interesting, the, the detective that gave his speech, and the firefighter that's got young kids that is now suffering from it, I think he said he was three years on the job when he was there at the, the Ground Zero. So it was just an honor to be there and, and obviously do what we do for the city as a whole, and to continue to grow that. Budget stuff, obviously, we have a budget meeting next week. I'd like to make sure and remind everybody, if you haven't gone into Mr. Perry and got information on some of budget issues, please do that. I would encourage everybody, because they do have information for you that can help answer some questions. And then obviously, you know, some of the accusations that are out there and things that are going on, you know, I mean, if, if, again, I'm going to go back to it, you know, sometimes when you're in the, the leadership role, or the head role, you get blamed for a lot of things that you don't do. But there is not one thing that, there is one thing that I will say, that I always do, is hold people accountable if there's something wrong. And when you bring the same thing to us over and over again after it's been investigated, there's not a lot to say. And, and when you read the emails, as Ms. Coker said, and some of the things that is such propaganda, and now calling people very vulgar and inappropriate names is not going to happen, and that's why we recessed for a moment. And, you know, it's not a matter of hiding from something that is fear, it's a matter of respecting the process of what we do. And if there's one thing that I learned from a young boy, Boys and Girls Club of all the years, is do the right thing for the right reason when nobody's looking. And I will always do that and respect the process. And I, you know, one of the things that's trying to be thrown back at me, smoking gun? Well, if you have a smoking gun, turn it into the DOJ, turn it into the FBI, turn it into any police department that's out there or force that will listen, and I will stand up and defend it the way that I can. So please do that. Because, you know, I am not going to sit here and defend something that we've already defended and talked about. We are here to serve the citizens and do the right things for the right reason when nobody's looking. Truth matters. So that's very important. And then one other thing, I just forgot, if I looked out at Ross, and Ross had, I think, at least one other, if not a couple with you on Sunday, but thank them as well. And I mean, I just think that's, you know, we appreciate what you do, and, and I know the one time I had heard that when nine eleven fell on a Sunday in the past, they had kind of changed the date. But I think it's important to do it on that day, to honor those that lost their lives and the ones that are still honoring it. And that's one thing that, that we always look back on that, that day, and the months to follow that, is about how we as a country came together, no matter what our differences were. And I think that's important, that we do that now, too, as a country. We can have our differences, but we don't have to go to the, to the negative so bad that it's us against them, you know? So I think that's very important. But I appreciate it, and I will serve as, as long as I'm here, and do the right things for the right reason when nobody's looking. So Mr. Perry, any department head comments that we need before we go? Any department heads have anything?
No, sir.
All right, appreciate it. We'll be adjourned. Thank you.